Everybody ready? Welcome to the August 4, 2020 Board of Commissioners meetings. Please silence your cell phones, pages, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. We do have speaker requests if you'd like to speak on any item today. Ms. Holly is still left here, standing on the wall, by the wall today. If you'd like to give her those speaker requests, she can give them to the Board of Commissioners. Next, we'll have a moment of silent reflection. Commissioner DeSanto, please.
Point of privilege.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to, in memory of our past Commissioner George Fairby, I'd just like to put this moment of silence in for him. George was a good servant of the county, served our country as a veteran. He was a man that stood by his beliefs and by his morals and by what he felt was right. And it wasn't easy to make George back down, which I don't think was a bad thing. We will all miss George. I will miss George. He was a good friend to me and a mentor and taught me a lot about the Constitution and basically how to stand for what you believe in and not back down. If that's what you believe in, that's what you believed in, and that's how George was. I appreciated that about George. So I'd appreciate if we could have our moment of silence in George's honor and George's memory. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll have the pledge of allegiance after the moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the common public on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the great and just as well.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the review and approval of the agenda. Mr. Roskinick, would you like to add an item?
Madam Chair, I'd like to add 13D.
The agenda, okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with adding 13D on Bogus Gym Road?
Some of.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Ms. Holly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hinnies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 21, 2020. Number six is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on August 18 for budget supplement SP 20-010 for the MacArthur Fund State's Attorney and the sheriff's budgets and the donations/contributions for revenue. Number seven is to declare a 1990 Dodge D-250 pickup asset number 40148 as surplus for the purpose of releasing the vehicle to the insurance company, which was submitted by Billings and Grounds. Number eight is to acknowledge disinternment permit number 1348435. And finally, number nine is to declare the list of leftover items from the jail kitchen and laundry remodel project as surplus property to be sold at auction, donated, or disposed of based on condition as submitted by the sheriff's office.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Is there any from the public who would like to speak on item five through nine? If not, is there any Commissioners that would like to?
Motion to approve.
To pull off anything from the consent agenda? Motion by Roskinick.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 10 is executive session contractual pending litigation per SDCL 1-25-2-3. Ms. Holly, are we going to do any of the stuff in the back as well?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So just this motion?
Move to go on to executive session.
Moved by Roskinick, second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Motion to come out of executive session, please.
Some move.
Come out of executive session.
By Drews, second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Are you ready, Mr. McCrory?
Yep.
Okay. MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge presentation, Ms. Liz, Sheriff Tom, and Honorable Presiding Judge Craig Feifley, and team members.
Good morning. Kevin Tom, Painted County Sheriff, and here to talk about our MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge. And Judge Feifley and I co-chair our local committee.
Announcing.
And I know Barry and Eric and Mark are going to come up meet to make a few comments, and then Liz is going to back clean up and do the PowerPoint presentation because she has it down really well and did a nice job putting the data together for us. We started this in 2015. We got our first award. And since then, Painted County has been the recipient of almost $5 million, a little over $5 million in cash and what we call technical assistance, where they come on site and help us, you know, refine what we're trying to do and give us guidance. So it's been a good process. We were originally the smallest jurisdiction in the MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge. And there are a lot of big entities around the country, large urban areas. And we were the only jurisdiction initially that had any nexus to our Native American population or tribal partnerships and tribal communities. So that's been one of our areas of focus. So.
I just wanted to echo the sheriff. We thank you for your support of the project. It has been sort of a real benefit to our community. I think that your willingness to partner with MacArthur has shown a real model for others around the country, particularly jurisdictions, as the sheriff mentioned, of our size that are a little smaller. We have some issues that are completely different from Chicago, for example. But that willingness to try new things has really been a benefit to what we know is a tight budget here because we've implemented some things, and Liz will talk about them, that I think will have some long-lasting effects on your budget, how we deliver services, and frankly, a real positive impact on the community that we serve. So we just wanted to commend you for your willingness to adopt this program, move forward with us, and allow us to do some things that are really well-serving our community. I think probably the highest praise that we have seen is that, as the sheriff mentioned, we were one of sort of the original groups around the country to do this. Manyaha County is now doing it. They have really sort of copied what we've done. And so I think that speaks well to us, that it's a model that can be adopted by other jurisdictions in similar circumstances. And I think it's proven to be very successful with that. I know we've got some comments by some of the other folks that you work with on a regular basis, Mr. Vargo, Mr. Tice, and Mr. Witcher.
It's been very much a team effort, both the system stakeholders and community members. And you have to remember, jails our size and smaller represent probably about 90% of the jails in this country. So once you throw the LA, Chicago, New York out of the equation, we represent about 90% of the jails in the country. So what we do here, people can learn from another parts of the country. So we'll hand it off to whoever wants to go.
Mr. Vargo, would you like to come up? And Mr. Witcher?
Morning, Madam Chair. Mark Vargo, Painted County State's Attorney. Not used to appearing with Eric so much, but that's good.
I try to socially distance myself from Mark where possible.
But this actually is kind of an illustration because what we're accomplishing here, you've seen it in the news and you've seen it all over the country. I think there's a recognition that we have to do criminal justice differently, that simply incarceration is too expensive. That's what Senate Bill 70 was all about, you know, seven, eight years ago now. And that it's not productive, that we weren't getting the results that we wanted to get from just saying, okay, if you did this, then we're going to put you in jail for this long, and when you come out, we're hoping you're going to be better. You won't do it again because you don't want to go back to jail. And that is obviously a model that works sometimes. But we also realize that we are over utilizing that model, and we weren't getting the results that we wanted out of it. And MacArthur really gave us a foothold into trying some things that were fundamentally different. And when I can tell you that I look at kids coming out of our diversion program, and obviously, that's the one that I work most closely with. But when I look at the young adults that are coming out of our diversion programming and realize that not only are they not coming back to jail, but they have full-time jobs, they're supporting their families, they're no longer reliant on public assistance or as reliant on public assistance, they're paying taxes either through rent or sales taxes, payroll taxes. They are fully contributing members of this community. And I don't, I realize that it's probably somebody's PhD thesis to figure out exactly what that means in terms of value to the county, to put a number on it. But the individual exemplars that we see every single day coming down, people who are having their records expunged because they've done well on the program, they succeeded, and now they're fully functioning members of this community are truly just awe-inspiring. And it has given us as well, I believe, a more legitimate platform when we go talk to some of our at-risk communities. So we talk to our, for instance, our native community, who historically, there's some mistrust there between the state of South Dakota and some of our tribes. When they can see that the state of South Dakota or County of Pennington is out there legitimately trying to make people's lives better and not just punish them, then when we go to them and we do have an issue where we want, you know, where there is punishment maybe that's going to be required, we have some credibility because we're not just throwing, locking everybody up and throwing away the key. And so I think that that discernment and that ability to walk out into those communities has helped start some process of reconciliation between our communities. And I think that it's been an incredible, had an incredible impact on the work that we do.
I just want to echo all the comments that have already been made. We really appreciate this commission's support through the Safety and Justice Challenge grant. This has been a long process, and we've continued to learn and continued to adapt and to innovate. And one of the things that really struck me as this pandemic occurred, we really had the infrastructure and the teams already built so that we could very quickly handle that, reduce the jail population through what is called our jail population review team. Liz will probably talk about that more later, but includes probation, the public defender's office, the state's attorney's office, and other staff members that basically comes through who's in the jail and why are they in the jail, looking at their bond amount. And we all meet and say, can we release these folks? And ask the judge to release them. So if we all agree, typically, the judges are very inclined to say, yeah, we'll go ahead and reduce their bond. We were able to, through that process, reduce the jail population in a very orderly, where all voices were heard in manner very quickly as opposed to let's just let a bunch of people out. So it's created the infrastructure that's really has served us well in this pandemic, and I think it's going to continue to serve us in the future. So with that, again, thank you.
Thank you. I think we're done. Oh, Barry has to speak.
Good morning. Barry Tice, the Director of Painted County Health and Human Services. And I prefer to really socially distance from those two. So I'll keep my comments brief. Health and Human Services representatives have been involved with the Safety and Justice Challenge since its inception in 2015. And I think as all of you are aware and everybody sitting in this room, Rapid City and Pennington County has always demonstrated its ability to collaborate. And when you can have the state's attorney and public defender sit in the same room full of individuals from across the United States, when we go to these MacArthur convenings and our sheriff and our chief and the human services guy sitting at the same table, it really shows how we have the ability and ingenuity to come up with creative solutions that can look at a different way of approaching the criminal justice system while still keeping our communities safe. And so I'm very proud of that. I'm proud of the work that's done within Health and Human Services to work with a very vulnerable population, the individuals who use the Safe Solutions Program, which again is another alternative for law enforcement and, you know, has provided substantial opportunities for individuals to choose a different path in their lives. And so, you know, I'm proud of our caseworkers who assist in that area. And I'm really grateful, of course, the Pennington County Commission, but also the MacArthur Foundation for investing in a community in western South Dakota. When, as the sheriff mentioned, and Judge Feifley, you know, essentially, in 2015, we were competing against Los Angeles County and Chicago and counties out of Texas. And, you know, we've demonstrated that pre-pandemic and even during the pandemic, we've created ways in which we can look at these alternatives to incarceration. It's pretty amazing. So with that, I will step back and let Liz take over.
Thanks, Barry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Liz.
Good morning. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak about MacArthur. Obviously, as the grant manager, I'm a little biased towards the benefits to MacArthur. I have some history in justice system reform efforts. I was the JDAI Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Coordinator in assist to this day for the last 10 years. And so we saw it work on the juvenile side. And so we knew when the application to be part of the Safety and Justice Challenge, there was 191 applicants, we knew our jurisdiction had a very good chance of being one of those 191 sites that were successful. Because we already had the collaboration, in fact, I get calls all the time. How do you do it? How do you, how does your jurisdiction work so well together? How do you get the defense and the state's attorney, but not only that, but the chief of police and the sheriff's office work together and be collaborative? I think we have just the perfect-sized community and also enough buy-in and historical success to go off of. So I'm the one that's going to talk about what MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge is all about and kind of fill in the gaps of what the amazing stakeholders have talked about thus far. The stakeholders and the collaboration is what has made us the site that we are today. You know, I will say, I think we're kind of one of MacArthur's favorites because we're a unique site. We have unique challenges, and we haven't always had the best success, but it's not without trying everything. And it's one of those really amazing things that has helped us with the support of the foundation to try those unique ideas and suggestions. And if they don't work, then they don't work, but we at least know we tried. So I'll talk about some of those.
I appreciate you coming today because a lot of us don't know what you were doing. And as you know, when we had a meeting with you and the sheriff and Mr. Feifley and the state's attorney, it's nice for you to come forward and kind of show us because sometimes it's just the communication. It's not that we think you're doing something wrong. It's just that we don't know everything you're doing. So we appreciate you being here today and Mr. Feifley and state's attorney and public defender Barry and sheriff's office. It makes a difference for us to communicate to each other. That way, we know what you guys are doing. And we also, I like to know what you're doing, not to micromanage you, but also to, or not also, but to look at those areas that you're working at and implement them in our community through other people. So, or tell them what you're doing because people sometimes, oh, they're not doing anything. It's not really doing any good to get them MacArthur or anything because you never hear about it. I mean, you guys do because you're in that group, but the rest of us in the community don't. So I appreciate you being here and kind of showing the amazing things that you guys have been doing as a team to get some of the jail numbers down and just help some of our juvenile and some of our people in our community that need that extra step up. So, thank you.
So the MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge started back in 2015. Like I said, there were 191 initial counties that applied, and only 21 were chosen as that initial cohort of sites. Right now, the Challenge Network represents 51 cities and counties across 32 states. So in our state, it's our county and Manyaha County. The SJC sites, Safety and Justice Challenge, I'll kind of use those interchangeably, SJC, Systems of Safety and Justice Challenge, they account for 15% of the national jail population. The goal of the MacArthur Foundation is to help counties and jurisdictions that were struggling with reducing their jail populations safely, identifying ways to reduce disparities in their justice system as a whole, but just needed that additional support. And so that's what the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge is all about. So our timeline, as has been alluded to by the stakeholders, we've been, we've received over $5 million in not only funding, but also technical assistance. There, you know, our first award was $150,000. We were one of 19. There were 21, but two of them dropped out. And then we received another $150,000 grant. October 2017 was our big money. We received 1.7 million, 1.75. We were awarded an additional $150,000 for community engagement-specific work. And then in February of 2020, we were awarded 1.2 million. Now, the MacArthur funding is geared towards safely reducing the justice system or the jail population safely and identifying ways to reduce disproportionality within the justice system as a whole. But as the MacArthur Foundation went along, they identified that community engagement was a really important piece and was really tough to connect to a direct correlation in the reduction in jail population. And that's where that additional funding came specifically for that community engagement strategy. The partner organizations, I won't name all of them because there's a lot, as you can see. But basically, being a MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge site, we have access to every single one of these entities, whether it's an issue, a question, participating in free webinars, participating in conferences, et cetera, up to having people come in and do a specific site, you know, kind of deep dive. For instance, the JFA Institute, they helped us with our data in order to prepare us for applying for MacArthur funds. PRI has helped us, helped a lot with the Care Campus. And JMI, Justice Management Institute, is actually our initial, our direct tie to technical assistance. I speak with them regularly and talk about what we're doing and how we're doing. They're our direct tie with the MacArthur Foundation and, you know, kind of our, the middle person, so to speak. There's also a group of strategic allies. You know, for example, you know, the Association of Prosecuting Attorneys, they have a leadership institute that our state's attorney's office goes to. There's different, the National Legal Aid and Defense Association. They have conferences, meetings, et cetera. The International Association of Chiefs of Police, we attend their conferences. So those are just a few examples of things that we participate in and have access to automatically for being a Safety and Justice Challenge site. So our goal by the end of 2021 is to reduce our jail population safely by 22%. Our plan is to reduce the jail population by that percentage and also reduce that disproportionality within the justice system, especially for the Native American population. And we plan to do that by these four strategies. As been alluded to before by Mark Vargo, tribal outreach has been one of our strategies all along. We never tied any funding or any jail population reduction to that. We're actually one of the only sites to do, well, we were the only site to do that for, within our first application because we know we had to build and sustain those relationships with our community partners if we were going to have any traction and long-term sustainability of what we were doing. Because we're really one community of individuals, right? You know, so that's been a huge strategy that we've been working on. Case processing, just identifying, implementing strategies to identify case delays and identify ways to handle cases differently that allow for deprocess rights for individuals, but also making sure that we're not having cases go longer than they need to within the court system. Alternatives to incarceration is just that. It's identifying alternatives to, for every single level of the justice system and identifying ways, what alternative programs or, you know, strategies or anything, you know, processes for individuals to go into in lieu of a stay in jail. And then community engagement I spoke about, and it's just bringing in the community into that, those reform efforts. And here's a little bit of, a few of the specific strategies and programs that we've implemented thus far. One thing I'll talk about first, let me see, I'm them, is the community engagement. So what we did with the community engagement award of $150,000 is we created a criminal justice community engagement work group. We actually had an application process. We had quite a few interested individuals. And right now, they're working on, you know, in light of COVID, they're not meeting, so it's a little more difficult. But, you know, they're really working on understanding what the MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge is all about and how can they, as a community, really provide the community perspective? And that's going really well. Other activities include warrant resolution. We created a 1-800 number for anyone with an active warrant, and that's actually housed within the state's attorney's office and is overseen by state's attorney's office staff thus far. I'll get into the stats in the next document, but we've had some really good success. And, you know, so the 1-800 number is something that when we go out and do community events, we talk about, do you have an active warrant? Do you know somebody with an active warrant? Here's some assistance with, you know, talking to somebody about how do you resolve that. We review and resolve old warrants. So there's an individual, Carolyn Olson, who takes a look at all of our warrants 10 years older, older, and looking at whether there's, you know, a legal ability to move on or move forward with that case, or whether it's something we can dismiss or have another alternative option. We also have Health and Human Services staff that assist the Care Campus clients with resolving the warrants as well. Because there's a few of the individuals that are utilizing the services at the Care Campus that also have active warrants. And so it's a way for them to resolve that while they're, you know, connecting with services.
Liz, before you move on, just one question. So how do you, how do you decide what process they need? If Gary came in and, do you do kind of like the RAY program you do for juveniles? Do you do kind of that program on Gary to see what overview or what activity or area he should be in? How do you all decide that? Because you have all these different areas that you have to put people. But how you decide that Gary needs this program, this program, and this program in order to succeed? How do you guys figure that out?
Sorry, I was on the warrant resolution. I thought you were talking about how we decide those. That's why that has to run through my office because ultimately, we're the charging agency. And that's a case-by-case analysis. So it is fairly time-intensive for us. But what it means is the next time that that person is in Rapid City, for instance, or is out and they speed and the blue lights come on behind them, that they're not going to put the gas on, they're going to stop, they're going to get a speeding ticket like the rest of us, and then they're going to go on their merry way. If they know they have a warrant, then we turn those minor things into very major things when they go on the run, for instance. So a lot of different things like that that go into warrant resolution. I'll let Liz talk about how we decide, like, which piece you're going to get plugged into.
So do you have like a history of Gary and that's how you do it, or?
Well, with the warrant resolution specifically, an individual with a warrant can call into the 1-800 number. And then that, they'll talk with a staff person and kind of figure out what's the best route, right? It might be scheduling a new court hearing. It might be visiting with the state's attorney's office about, you know, providing documentation, et cetera. But as far as, and if I'm maybe understanding you incorrectly, but as far as how these, you know, programs, these activities kind of interact with each other, the first step when somebody goes into the jail after law enforcement contact, you talked about the risk assessment instrument on the juvenile side. It's the public safety assessment on the adult side. And so it's the second box. So you're actually very good segue. So it be implemented at the point of booking and at the initial appearance. So if somebody has just straight charges.
Right.
If they're coming to contact with law enforcement, they go to, they're referred to jail, there's a document or a historical check of their criminal history and their failure to appear history. And that will say either hold or release. And then if there's any other hold reason, maybe like a probation violation or warrant, obviously, we don't, we can't hold a release because there's already a hold there. Then those are completed before that person goes into their initial appearance. And what that did was it took place of And what that did was it took place of the, the monetary bond schedule. So now their, the response of their public safety assessment, the PSA, says whether they're held or released pending their initial appearance that next business day.
But can they tell by their records, basically, where they need the most help in the areas that you guys are providing, meaning, uh, Gary, um, you know, he has these repeat offense. But when you visit with him, you have someone visit with him and go, okay, now we really found the underlying issue. Now we're going to put him in, three different classes or three different areas and see if, um, one of those would work to basically make him divert or not have recidivism.
The, the PSA is more about, um, what's the likelihood of that individual's likelihood? What's their likelihood of committing any offenses before that initial appearance, if they were to be released? And what's their, um, failure to appear risk, right? Um, and so it's really making that initial decision of what do we do at that point of, um, initial contact. It can be used for services, you know, identifying, there's a longstanding, um, you know, drug or alcohol history. Then maybe there's some options, options there. Um, you know, maybe when the state's attorney's office looks at the file, they can see, you know, there's a, a long-term history of some of those things, and maybe they would recommend, um, you know, an eval of some sort. Um, but it's not necessarily, these programs are not necessarily interconnected. They're just different strategies. And so, um, at the initial appearance, it's the, it's up to the judge to identify, and the state's attorney and the defense attorney to, to really recommend what's that initial response.
Okay, so basically the booking or the public strategy, um, is basically when they get booked, what's the best alternative for not throwing them in jail?
Right.
That's what that is.
It's making, it's, it's making the hold or release decision.
Review of what areas.
Chime in just a minute, because I think I know where you're going, Dad. Yeah, PSA is just for whether to hold that day and move on. It gathers some information, gives them the history. Then later on, when the court date comes and then there's more evaluations and then, between state's attorney and public defenders, then they find, they work together to find what's best for that individual, if, if it's possible.
Liz was, was asking, basically, you're getting money, um, to, to do overview or different areas. And I wondered how you incorporated it once they got their PSA or, or is that later on? Or is that after the state's attorney, like you're saying, state's attorney and public defender, they help recommend these areas?
Yeah, so the PSA.
Implementing?
The PSA definitely is an additional tool for individuals to about, as they're making an, a, a, uh, decision at that initial hearing. Um, it's not a sole decision-making, because obviously we have, you know, people are humans, and this is a score. Um, but it definitely provides a good overview of what that individual's entire criminal history looks like. Including their out-of-state history and their failure to appear. So it gives a snapshot of what their history looks like. And then, uh, additional information is gathered, whether they have a job and some of those exterior things that would help them be supportive. Um, and one thing that I'll bring up, um, I'll kind of go down to the pre-trial monitoring program. Because we didn't really have, we, because our state does not have a pre-trial, um, department. We don't have, you know, kind of pre-probation, right? Um, if, if individuals are released, they're released, and then they might reach out to, um, the state's attorney or their defense attorney for questions, or maybe the clerk of court. Um, there was nobody really there to help them kind of navigate the pre-trial system. And so on July thirteenth of this year, we launched the pre-trial monitoring program. Within our pseudo-pre-trials department with two of our staff that are, um, funded through the MacArthur Foundation. And these individuals that are assigned to this program are, are assigned to check in either in person or by phone, based on their criminal history and based on their likelihood to commit future offenses or not show up at court. Um, and they were basically talking, uh, to the pre-trial staff, saying, um, you know, they're asking, do you have the resources? Do you need any assistance? You know, I was just talking to Barry Tice with HHS this morning about, you know, what's that linkage to their programs and, and their services, because, we don't want the, the individuals within the pre-trial monitoring program to be their long-term, longstanding assistants. We want them to utilize the community-based assistance that's available, because that's excellent, right? And so it's, it's just about kind of providing that warm handoff and also reminding about court. And talk, you know, answering questions about what to wear, or when to show up, or are masks required? Some of those things that some individuals might have heard, um, but, but they might not remember, um, you know, ahead of their hearing. And so, um, we've had, we have four total people that have been referred, um, and we've had a hundred percent success with them checking in thus far. And we've had some good feedback about the assistance that's provided. So I foresee that being a very, very beneficial resource. Um, and was definitely in need, because as you're right, um, you know, some of those individuals just need some assistance navigating the system. Um, you know, so if they have an interest in seeking an eval or something like that, evaluation, then we can provide them that resource. Of food at contact.
Thank you, Liz.
Um, the low-level offender court, I'll talk about next. I should have ordered these differently. Um, the state's attorney's office identifies individuals with low-level, non-violent offenses. That are held via, um, the public safety assessment at the point of jail, but they might have low-level charges. And so they actually visit with those individuals ahead of their hearing, um, and talk about, you know, potential plea offers or potential disposition options. Um, and then that individual visits with the state, the defense attorney that's attending jail court. Um, and we've had some pretty good success with that as well, um, you know, reaching disposition right away. Um, knowing what the outcome could have been two weeks down the road. And what it does is it just decreases the likelihood of a failure to appear. Um, you know, whether that would happen or not, um, it decreases that, um, that even being an option. We also launched a court reminder program, um, and we did it a little bit differently than other sites. Because of, um, there's some individuals within our community that don't have cell phones, you know, continuously. Um, individuals are signed up for a text message reminder, um, a week out and a day out. Um, if they do not have a phone number, then we actually have been working with the Hope Center, and they are helping us, um, putting a list. Um, you know, helping with some of the reminders for some of the folks that are, um, you know, using their facility during the day. Um, and that's been really helpful. Uh, one of the other pre-trial, um, programs that is an option for, um, like you had talked about, um, is pre-trial electronic monitoring. Um, and that's where individuals are required to wear an ankle bracelet pending their next hearing, and their whereabouts are tracked. Now, that program is, um, primarily used where there's a victim involved. Because it, it kind of tracks whether they're, where they're at and what's going on, and includes either exclusion or inclusion zones. And so that's helpful as well, um, to have somebody released and, um, you know, kind of the safety of the alleged victim. Um, Vargo talked about the state's attorney's office diversion program, so I won't go into that. Um, you know, but that's definitely something that has been part of the Safety and Justice Challenge effort. Um, in fact, it was one of the initial strategies, um, of the work. The jail review team, uh, Witcher talked about that, um, and, you know, we review cases weekly. And, and I echo what he said, um, that was extremely beneficial, um, in preparation for jail reduction. Um, due to COVID. They, they, there was a unified ju- uh, decision. The judges knew that the state and the defense and probation were all on board, um, with the release recommendation. And so we were able to make a huge impact with reducing that jail population safely. Without, you know, kind of opening the doors and kind of picking and choosing, um, you know, and I'll tell you that, um, Pennington County had probably one of the best responses that I've heard, um, among the SJC sites. Because we did have a lot of those efforts in place, and we just tweaked them a little bit to either meet more frequently or change the scope of the conversations to where we can, we could release the jail population very quickly in a very safe manner. And not have the negative repercussions coming afterwards, after that release.
So do you guys work with probation areas pretty well? Where people are on probation and, um, they have issues? And have had issues with probation and have been on probation before? Have you changed anything in that through, um, MacArthur?
There's been some process changes, a lot of the case processing changes with probation, absolutely. Um, as with all of, all parts of the justice system as in, as a whole, um, you know, probation's definitely at the table. Um, and obviously presiding judge Greg Feisley's at the table as well. Um, and so we're, we're kind of, it's an all-hands-on-deck approach with these recommendations and, you know, typically, when we launch a new program, there's those ripple effects into other entities. And so, um, that's kind of my role, is to make sure people, um, you know, we kind of anticipate what those ripples look like and make sure that individuals, um, are aware of what those ripples might be and, and can identify any, any, issues. But we absolutely work, um, the pre-trial isn't, isn't working with this probation, because it would get confusing. Um, you know, having more than one individual that they work with, um, but we're definitely on a MacArthur level, um, probation's definitely at the table.
Thank you.
Uh, an alternative to sentencing is the community work program. Um, and so individuals can be, um, recommended for community service in lieu of a stay in jail. Um, they're required to complete a certain number of hours as ordered by the judge. Um, one other thing that we've been using the program for that's been really beneficial is probation violations or sanctions. Um, and also for, um, the specialty courts, um, and that's been really successful. I'll go through these very quickly. The SJC positions, um, the Safe Solutions Case Manager through Health and Human Services. There's one FTE, Detox Text, there's four over at the Care Campus. Uh, there's a Drug Diversion Coordinator with the State's Attorney's Office, an EMT at the Care Campus. Um, a Jail Release Coordinator, um, and she's within the jail review, or the, um, pre-trial department, um, and under the Sheriff's Office. Uh, she oversees the jail review team and also assists with court notifications and is one part of the pre-trial monitoring program. The pre-trial release specialist, um, is also with the Sheriff's Office and completes and oversees the PSAs. And also assists with the pre-trial monitoring program and court notifications. And then the last one is me.
What are you, this kid?
Good question.
I, I could answer that after she's done.
Um, the other SJC strategies we have is Contract with I Am Legacy. It's a community-based cultural, co- community and cultural-based program, who is working on outreach engagement, um, within the Rapid City community and within reservation communities. Um, they, and, um, they, meaning Eric and Morgan Brings White, have been, um, a great asset to the MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge work by opening up doors to communications, um, with individuals we probably wouldn't have had before, um, but also.
And Miss Liz?
Um, Eric and Morgan Brings White.
Yeah. They've got a facility up at the mall.
They do, yes. That's called I Am Legacy.
Where are they at, Lloyd?
In the mall.
Thank you.
And they have programs and, um, you know, they also meet with, um, individuals that are, you know, navigating the justice system. Um, and so they're a great resource there. We have a contract with Seven Directions. And they provide cultural-based treatment to individuals held in jail in the drug diversion program and individuals within the community. Um, and that's, um, at Chizzy Spencer and Ruth Cedarface. Um, and they've been doing programs with them in jail for quite a while, and they've had great success. Um, and, um, it's, it's kind of alcohol tru- alcohol-drug treatment-based, but it's a cultural-based program. Um, and the, the response has been phenomenal. We've also recently contracted with Benchmark Data Labs, which is the former Black Hills Knowledge Network. Um, because one thing that we've been struggling with, um, you know, I do data on a very basic level, but I'm definitely not an analyst. And so one thing that we've, we've contracted with them to do a deep dive into our data and figuring out, um, at each decision point, where are there areas that we need to improve? And what does that look like? And what, you know, potential, um, options do we have? The other thing they're going to be doing is setting us up for dashboards internal and external. Um, to, that, so we can keep track of our data long-term without a lot of human work that has to go into, um, preparing that data. The other thing I'll speak about is, no, actually. So I'm proud to say that Pennington County has reached our, and exceeded our goal of twenty-two percent since baseline. Um, now, part of that, um, we experienced via COVID, but honestly, I think we would have gotten there anyway. I think it just sped up the process a little bit. Um, and again, the top part is the, um, timeline that I spoke about and the strategies. But I want to really look at, um, the jail, um, ADP is the average daily population. Decreased by thirty point two percent since June twenty, twenty nineteen, and decreased twenty-three percent since baseline. Now, baseline is, uh, November of twenty fifteen to April of twenty sixteen. And that's our required baseline for the MacArthur Foundation to basically help them figure out where we're at and what's going on. So you can see between January twenty twenty, our average daily population, and now this is just for Pennington County folks, was at three ninety-nine. And in June, we're at two seventy-five. So we've experienced a, a reduction, um, in the jail population, you know, drastically since, um, January, February of this year.
Does that have to do with COVID, or that has to do with implementation, implementation of your programs?
I think, um, a little bit of both. Um, because I think COVID caused us to really, um, implement programs sooner than, uh, like, the pre-trial monitoring program and some of those things, um, and also increase kind of the, um, the scope of work of like the jail review team. Uh, we, we increased the number of staffings, and so we obviously had more people that were, um, positively, um, benefited from that program. So I think it was because of both.
Well, bottom line, you could use that at that time because of COVID, in order to implement some of your programs to see if they worked.
Absolutely. I think if we weren't a MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge site, didn't have the collaboration, and didn't have the conversations, um, and the, the, some of the programs and the alternatives in place already. We would not be seeing a, a jail population of two seventy-five in June. Um, I, I can, I'm pretty firm in saying that. So what we, um, what I do on a month-to-month basis is I look at our jail population, um, since the baseline and also, um, specifically for the Native American jail population because of the, um, our effort to reduce disparities. Um, in June twenty twenty, we increased by seven percent from the previous month, but we, we decreased by twenty-three percent since the baseline. Um, in June twenty twenty, for the Native American population, we decreased by nine percent from the previous month and by thirteen percent since baseline. So here are some of the stats that are in, you know, kind of aligned with those different programs that I talked about. Um, you know, I'll just do some quick highlights. Uh, warrant resolution, we've looked at and resolved one thousand two hundred and twenty-four re- uh, overall warrants have been resolved. Um, eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven PSAs have been completed since June sixth of twenty eighteen. The jail review team has saved three thousand nine hundred and forty-seven jail bed days. By the staffing of eight hundred and, and release of eight hundred and forty-four, or excuse me, two hundred and twenty-eight individuals. We've staffed eight hundred and forty individuals. The low-level offender court that I talked about has, um, the state's attorney's office visited with a hundred and seventy-four individuals. Of those seventy-five reached disposition. Pre-trial monitoring has, um, had nine hundred and thirty-three unique individuals. Um, the community work program has completed six thousand five hundred and three point five, um, community service hours since it launched in August of twenty eighteen. Um, the Care Campus has definitely been one of the heavy hitters, um, and, and definitely a success with MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge. I don't know that we would have been successful without it, um, because it provides such a unique and, and broad alternative, um, for those, um, in lieu of jail and in lieu of justice system. Um, so we've had, there's been four thou- forty-four thousand three hundred and forty-four, um, three hundred and forty-nine intakes, um, since. And that's as of, this is as of June. Uh, thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight intakes into Safe Solutions. We also track, um, of the referrals by law enforcement, how many would have been, how many are system diversions? Um, we used to call it just, we used to call it, um, you know, jail diversions, but really the sheriff pointed out, this is really system diversions. Because when individuals walk into the jail, or walk into the Safe Solutions or Care Campus as a whole by law enforcement, law enforcement is not charging them with anything. So they don't have a charge, they don't have anything following them, they don't have a warrant, they don't have anything fol- uh, anything after that, that situation. And about sixteen percent of law enforcement referrals, um, are system diversions. And then the state's attorney's office has had great success with not only the young adult diversion program, but also the adult diversion, drug diversion. And, um, March, I think, launched dr- uh, a new diversion program.
It's a little bit different, but honestly, it kind of stems out of the work that we've done. A lot of these things do, where you try something and then you figure out a way to, alter it slightly and make it work in another part of the system. One of our most difficult cases to prosecute are domestic violence cases, and that's because of witness intimidation, but also then witness desires. They, they don't want this to go forward. And we are exploring and have started with a domestic violence protocol, which puts offenders through, um, programs that will hopefully help them change their behaviors. But then accommodates the victim in saying that we won't hang a conviction on that person. So we, we meet both of them and hopefully we'll have a bigger impact. And that's very much according to the diversion model, so. That's only very brand-new. We're working with a scopol psychiatric to have an actual. That's only very brand-new. We're working with a scopol psychiatric to have an actual um, program for that, but. That's another one that's kind of growing out of all of this, the way so many, so much of this stuff does.
Oh, um, that comes to my um, question about, so we had talked about this Liz. So you spend money on doing programs and you go, okay, um. We're gonna try and implement this in Pennington County where the Sheriff, Sheriff's Office, Public Defender or State's Attorney. When do you find that you have to like, readjust, um, Mr. Vargo kind of went in that, into that for me? That you readjust, um, so you're getting the most bang for your buck, plus if it's something that we actually are gonna need further in the court system. Or in any of these different areas, that bottom line, um. Okay, I had to say it straight, that you're not having it come into Pennington County as a cost to us without basically. You went through these different areas going, okay, this is why we need a FTE for this program. This is how much we decreased it. This, these are the three things we dropped in order to get to this program. You, you see where I'm going? In other words, um, you're spending um, the MacArthur money for the best bang for the buck, but you're also not. As most people think, bringing in FTEs because of grants and that's why you're doing that. To Pennington County or Rapid City or whoever, because I've heard it since I've been in uh, politics that you're doing grants. People do grants so they can implement them into uh, other programs and have ten more police or ten more people in the courts. Or ten more, um, basically public defenders. Not that that's a bad thing for me, um, just depending on what. You know, those programs are and how much they have been proven, but I think I just answered my own question. So you do MacArthur programs and you get these programs, so when you do the grants and the grants are used for. To find where to get the be- best bang for the buck.
Absolutely. Um, and that's the nice thing about the MacArthur Funds. We can try something and if it doesn't work or if it doesn't fill. Um, the, the. Gap that we thought we had, then we don't have to continue it.
But they let you, sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
But they let you re-implement the money that's, you're, you're going back and saying, okay, we've done this for three months. Uh, I don't think so. Um, we have a different program. Mr. Vargo just said, we have a different program that we found that would work a lot better than what we're doing now. We're not really getting what we wanted out of that. They just let you switch that over?
Yes. Um, so that's the beauty of the MacArthur Foundation. Um, and so I talked about our, our connection, direct connection with Justice Management Institute, JMI. So they help uh, on a month-to-month basis do updates for us on behalf as kind of a neutral party. Um, and so their job is to say, Pennington County tried this program for three months. It didn't have as much success as they had thought, and so we're pivoting to something else. Um, and the MacArthur Foundation wants us to do that. They want us to try new and innovative. Um, ideas and programs and processes with the funding that they've provided us, so we can justify at the end of the day. Is it something we need to keep or is it something that isn't worth moving forward? And I'll tell you that, um, you know, with this last grant application, we were very, um. We were very thoughtful about sustainability, more so than any of the other sites that um, applied for the funding. Because we wanted to make sure that we weren't just filling a position to fill a position, right? Um, for example, we had a person leave and now two people are filling the position of three, of, of, that were three people. We're very ca- cautious about um, adding more, um, you know, can we add, kind of separate duties and add to what we currently have? Or do we need to fill that position? And we've been doing that all along, just because we didn't want to end up where we had all these positions and people. At the end of the day and not really knowing how to, how to sustain those, those individuals and those functions. And so I will tell you that that's part of my job too, is to make sure that the things that we're implementing, we can stand behind full force. Not only in telling the MacArthur Foundation that we're spending the money in the right way, but also justify at the end of the day. If, you know, when MacArthur's out of our world, we can come to you all and say, we know that these are um, beneficial programs. These are beneficial folks and this is how we're going to sustain this long-term without having a negative impact on the budget.
And I apprec- appreciate that because I think justifying, um, not just to your politicians, but justifying to your public. Um, that's the bottom line, because you always hear people say different stuff. Okay, you just got a bunch of grants, now you're gonna have a bunch of FTEs, but. You just laid it out that, no, that's not what we do. We actually do these programs and if they're not working, sometimes we take off an FTE. And only have two. And I wanted the public, plus the other commissioners, to know that you're not, just because you have that program. It doesn't mean it didn't morph into something different and that program was taken off and maybe less FTEs as well, so. Um, it's, it's nice to know all that again, and it's nice for you to come up, that's why I said, for you to come up and kind of tell us about these things. Because a lot of times we, we don't know what you're doing. And so when you get up here, whether you're State's Attorney or Sheriff going, I need these FTEs, we've been doing this grant, we're just looking at you, yep, here comes another one. Um, if we knew about it beforehand, then we'd be like, oh yeah, now we understand, we need to do these, you know, we do need this FTE. It does, um, it's decreased uh, cost-effective areas in different um, areas that um, you have implemented through that grant. And then you started with three FTEs and now you have one for this program and, and it makes a huge difference, at least to me. Commissioner LaCroy.
Well, I think you're at the end of your presentation, right? Pretty close?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, you know, I've worked with Liz probably, well, since the day, day you started. Um, and with the JDAI, early on, that was Holloway and, and Judge Davis and kind of go to that and they got you into. And that's the key point throughout all this is the coordinator. And your position's changed throughout the last twelve years, and so she's been focused and very good for Pennington County and our area. And, and the team you just heard from, you know, I've been involved in this for quite a while. We tried to get. Organize some schedules to get Liz in to give a presentation, but our schedules haven't come, clashed together yet, but today it did. And you guys can see just from the presentation today, there's no way I can sit back and explain from a meeting to what's happening in our community. That all, all this stuff's come together. And so it was a really good experience having to come here today to explain to us. What everybody's doing in some of the programs that are happening. And i- i- it's not just the county, the city's doing other things too, you know, we're, uh. That we're working on, we're all working collabor- together. And so. Thank you guys for, for coming here and expressing your belief in MacArthur. And I will stress, it's just as she said, um, the sustainability, the last meeting when we were doing the grants, going through that. Um, that was the main part of the conversation, how are we gonna sustain this if one is done? We actually reduced our request because of that. And, uh, you know, that's key that we have uh, community members. State's attorneys looking at that when they're going through this. But I will express, the, one of the greatest things that I love about uh, the MacArthur Foundation is the ability to try something new. That was been the biggest key for, I think, both the Public Defender and the State's Attorney, they look at the programs and they, they can try it. And, and it's tested and they look at it thoroughly before they try to implement it, and if it's not working, they don't do it. But they identify and research what they are gonna implement very thoroughly, so they're not repeating it from somewhere else in the community. Or something along those lines, but they want to make sure it's gonna work before they try it, so. I, I give kudos to all you guys, but you know, Liz, you're the backbone of all this, as far as I'm concerned. I've worked with you for so long, that if it wasn't for your guidance, hurting all of us together. Everybody in the community and keeping us in, in that loop, um, it'd be much harder. But we did have the experience from, from the juvenile JDAI moving up to the, the adults to really, to work on. And you headed that from, from the get-go, so you had that experience to help with this too.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto?
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy.
I just want to couple, uh, touch on a couple of important, um, parts of this that Mark mentioned. As well as Liz, um, for the public, because the, the, the questions I get about these pro- these programs. Similar to yours, Deb, but also because of the media coverage of a lot of these other cities releasing prisoners. And inmates um, into the public and these inmates reoffending and so forth and so on. Um, I think it's important what Liz pointed out that we didn't just release a bunch of people. We, we put them through an intensive program to find out if it was safe to release them into the public. And um, and therefore not putting the community at risk. But at the same time, saving rooms in the jail and, and money, um, the bottom line. And to, to reiterate Mark's point that uh, these people, many of them are becoming contributing members of society. And getting out of the criminal system and into the working, raising a family. Buying a house, contributing to our economy, um, maybe someday becoming county commissioners, who knows? Um, but uh, what, what's, that's what I like about that, this program, and, and that's what I think that the public. It, it's an important component that the public needs to know about, that we're not just taking a bunch of people and letting them go. We're looking at them very carefully, making sure that they're the type of people we can release into society. And that they'll cooperate and try to improve their lives as opposed to just turning around and reoffending and. Winding right back up in the system again. So, um, yeah, I think you guys are, in my opinion, you're doing a great job. And, and this is a good program and I, I like it.
Miss Chair, uh, Drews, please.
Liz, I think you've done a great job in serving kind of as the umbrella, pulling everything together. Um, but the team has done a wonderful work overall. What I like about this, and I appreciate the presentation this morning and all the information that we gathered. Uh, what I appreciate about the MacArthur is allowing that adjustability. That when something isn't working quite the way you want it to, you can make the adjustment and try to make it work or make it work for a different kind of program. So certainly, this is a pilot program for the nation, I think. And uh, there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of entities are gonna be able to take advantage of what you're learning through this process. Uh, doesn't mean that they may not have to make some adjustments for their particular areas too. Uh, but at the same time, I think this has been a wonderful program. Uh, MacArthur is, um, you know, different than what most grant programs that I've been familiar with. Where it's a pretty rigid program, here's the program, you follow it, uh, if it fails, it fails, if it works, it works. And that isn't the way this program is working, so I commend everybody for being heavily involved in making this work for us. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Yes, yes, I want to commend you. I, I'm kind of a data collector myself and I think this detailed data, you know. Going back to the base, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, this is what makes this program work. Because we can sit there through this presentation and we can see results. We can, if we save four thousand bed nights, three thousand nine forty-seven at eighty dollars a night, that's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars savings to the county. So I, I, I really appreciate the detail and uh, I'm assuming that you have to, sometime today, you'll update that data. So I commend you on your work and your staff's work.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Um, the bottom line is, is the community can take advantage of these programs, not just the county. Um, when we have businesses that um, could use some of these different areas that you guys are working in, it's nice to know that information. So, um, that was my bottom line with knowing uh, what was going on. Because it's not just for the county, it's for our businesses that actually um, could use some of the work or actually. Uh, take advantage of some of those areas that we could help some of our people that are, um, in our businesses. So, um, we appreciate that you came today and Liz, I've known you for a long time as well. Um, you have been very, very informative on everything you've done, um, that's why it's been a success. Um, you're good at what you do, uh, you work well as team and, and again, you have a good team to work with. So, um, the people you work with know how to get things done uh, with you. So, um, thank you for everything, um, you've done with uh, your programs.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Liz?
I don't think so.
Sheriff, State's Attorney. Thanks for coming today.
Thank you.
You guys. Next we're on, items from the sheriff. We have Kevin again.
Morning, Kevin Dome, Pennington County Sheriff, again, uh, requesting two motions as outlined in the memo. The first one is to clear the six-vehicle surplus and then second motion is to put out bid for four vehicles. And on the vehicles that we're purchasing, we found like program cars or former leased vehicles, the ones that are newer used. But we find we can get into them, uh, very economical if we buy them newer used as opposed to new. As you can see by the list that's attached, we have fallen victim to hail like many people in the Black Hills. Um, to the tune of almost two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Some vehicles totaled, some hit more than once. Your dispatch does a nice job when storms are coming to let us know that storms are coming and you listen to radio traffic and deputies are scrambling for cover. But unfortunately, they're still respond to calls and accidents and other stuff, so you have to leave your cover and you fall uh, prey to the hail. And it uh, comes out, so this is a list of all the damage and just request uh, approval of the two motions that are listed in the memo.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Move to declare six vehicles as presented in our packet to be turned over as surplus to the insurance company.
Moved by Roskinex, second by Drews, any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Motion two, please.
I'd make a motion to authorize Sheriff's Office to put out for bid for four, four sedan vehicles.
Motion by Drews, second by Roskinex, discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. At some point, once we get the insurance checks, we'll have to come back and supplement the budget, the money back into our budget to purchase the vehicles and stuff, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Item thirteen is Highway Department. Item A, please.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, uh, Pennington County Highway. Um, first up there is an amendment to a work order for work on the South Rochford Road Bridge. So, um, this request came from federal highway to the state, to KLJ, um, for some additional right-of-way work. We've already paid, uh, there was an agreement, amendment came to you earlier in, I believe, February or March of this year. Um, that the county, we paid our portion, uh, nine thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars. And then this, this amendment is fully funded by the state, um, to my knowledge. Um, haven't heard anything different on that, so, um, there's no money coming out of our budget for this additional right-of-way work, so.
Any motion?
Motion.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Roskinex, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item B.
Item B, uh, so this is coming forward uh, to you in lieu of getting the wheel tax passed in uh, June, I think that was. Um, the, this brings, it brought up an opportunity to possibly apply for build grants. So originally, we were going to do the construction design on Thunderhead Falls in twenty twenty-one, um, and then build in twenty twenty-two. So now that we have a wheel tax in place and, and are bringing forward our five-year plan to approve that on our next meeting. We have an opportunity to, if, if the commission so chooses, to get these bridges designed, the construction engineering designed. To have them shovel-ready, to be able to apply for those grants in uh, January. The, the current bridges, the, the current estimates that we got from the engineer to replace both bridges is a total of uh, one million three. Three hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars, um, for total for both bridges, about six hundred. Ones, they're about seven hundred thousand dollars apiece. Um, if we're able to apply for the grants, um, would save the, the county about nine mil-. Or nine hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars, that's with our thirty percent match. So, um, we don't have to match thirty percent, we can match twenty percent. But to get our points up there and make us more competitive in the big grants, if we manage thirty percent, we get more points. Um, and looking at our budget for, so this would be construction in twenty twenty-two, so we just have to budget that, that amount. Um, if the county is successful in both of these applicants, the county would be uh, responsible for roughly four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Of the, the one point three million. So, um, the design cost for this year uh, is an amendment to our current work order that we already have with KLJ. And the amount of a hundred and three thousand dollars, so, um, this is something that does not absolutely need to be done this year, but we saw an opportunity there. To do that, so.
Just a question, Joe, sorry, Gary, just, um, so can you do those like temporary bridges? Kind of like we did on one fifty-fourth on these bridges or, uh, these has to be full, fully constructed, five to seven hundred thousand dollar bridges?
So if we're going to apply for big funds, we have to play by the state's rules, so that's.
Okay.
That's, if we're doing it county, right, and keeping it in-house. That's if we're doing it county, right, and keeping it in-house, we can prob, we can look at doing those those single lanes or the modular construction bridges.
Would it save us more money? Or are you just?
I don't think so. Um you know, you could, if you look at the four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that it would be, that bridge that we did on one sixty-fourth cost us a hundred and seventy-two thousand, but we didn't have to to do a lot of the the steps that we normally would have to do because it was under an emergency situation. So if we'd had to do that bridge under normal circumstances, it probably would have cost us two hundred and fifty to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
You clarified a lot. Um Commissioner Druze, please.
I I just think that it's smart to be uh prepared uh to be able to make the application.
Yes, sir.
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Druze. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item C.
Item C is our our highway budget status. So um first and foremost, we have a the wild card is Sheridan Lake Road. We're not sure exactly what the state's going to bill us for this year. Um currently, as it stands, they're going to bill us for a third, uh which is two point seven million dollars. Um we budgeted two point five last year, not knowing what we what was coming down the pipe. So we're approximately two hundred thousand dollars short there. With the proposed that you guys just approved uh of a hundred and three thousand, that was not in our ten percent cut either. Um South Rochford Road Reconstruction Project, we did get a uh contract from them, um that's seventy-six hundred dollars for the staking to move that project forward. Um we have to hit a deadline of September twenty-fifth with the right-of-way to get that bid this December. So we're we're working very hard to get that done. Thunderhead Falls there, uh as I said, a hundred and three thousand. The Nemo Road Bridge collapse is two hundred and twelve thousand. That was not budgeted in that ten percent. Um and then some of the projects that were coming forward there from uh two thousand nineteen. All in all, we're going to to make every effort that we can to to maintain that ten percent cut. But with the bridge, with Thunderhead Falls and then the the shortfall in Sheridan Lake Road, we need about, oh, I don't remember what the total was now. I had it all added together here. We need about fifty percent of that ten percent back to make all those that work. And and again, the the great unknown is is Sheridan Lake Road. There's been some correspondence between Chris and the state accounting that they may use our our S T P funds first, which then we would only get a bill for for eight eighty thousand dollars this year. So it could go either way, but as it stands right now, we know the last correspondence we had was they're going to bill us for for a third. So.
So Joe, um I'm not opposed to what you're doing. Um so tell us, basically, I lost my train of thought. Um bottom line is, we're getting one point three back from the wheel tax.
Possibly.
So you're ahead. Well.
Oh, yes, sorry.
So um you've been doing other areas or working on other areas in order to save money and also um with Gary and and his team with Holly and and the rest of you guys uh ended up getting this one point three. So that makes a difference for me uh as a commissioner uh to be able to say that we can give some of that money back, basically, because you have made us money as well. So um it's a good team effort and I think it was a something that we should move forward on. So.
And sure.
Ms. Druze.
I'd make a motion to to uh approve. Uh is it, is the five twenty-five correct, Joe, that's in here?
I was just trying to get there. My computer's being kind of slow here. But yes, that number should be correct.
Okay, to uh exempt up to the five hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars um for the highway department.
Motion by Druze.
Second.
Second by LaCroy.
Substitute motion.
Ms. Druze.
I would uh substitute a motion to make a motion to provide five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars excluding the South Rochford Road Reconstruction Project, ten thousand dollars for that. Um I'm in agreement with everything else on the list.
There a second to that? There a second? If not, we're back to the original motion. And I do have, my brain kicked in again, the STIP program. So um tell me again, we did the STIP program where we deferred and only had, we didn't have to pay, it was zero percent interest. Did we not use any of the STIP program for um Sheridan Lake Road?
So that's what, so we've got, I don't recall off the top of my head, I think it's about five and a half million dollars saved up in that STIP bank.
Okay.
So that, they're going to use that first.
Okay.
That's what they're talking about using first, is that money to cover this year's expenses on Sheridan Lake Road.
Okay.
And then we also borrowed against our STIP funds, which is about eight hundred thousand dollars we get every year.
Yep.
We just haven't been receiving that. We borrowed against that for ten years at zero percent interest. So basically, they'll keep that eight hundred thousand dollars each year instead of putting it into our bank.
So at this time, um they have to use the eight hundred thousand? We know we have, we gave, we built up five million on STIP. So the eight hundred thousand, we're going to be using that every year now for ten years?
We we haven't been receiving it. It's just been going into that bank. But basically, the state will just, instead of, so some counties have have a budget that they have to use that money every year. We've been fortunate enough that we just let the state bank it in our, in a little piggy bank at the the state, basically. So we haven't even seen that money in our budget. The bank, the state has just been keeping it.
So Joe, refer it back to that you might need some of the money out of this budget when you're getting STIP funds or they're taking STIP funds instead. Why?
The STIP funds have, so they're they're using, instead of billing the county for that money.
Right.
This year, they may take it out of the bank that the state has of our funds.
Right.
Right? So.
County funds.
Correct, Pennington County STIP funds.
That we receive every year. So we would receive more next year or whenever, or we decrease the the total of the ten-year because we are going to pay for it ourselves instead of taking out of those STIP funds.
No.
No, I think the point is, is that it's just, it's just not going, it's just not transferring over to us. It's being used for our projects, but it's just staying in a state fund.
Right. We we've never seen it in our budget. Heiney and and Tom both chose to just continue to let the state bank that eight hundred thousand dollars every year.
But what I'm saying is, you're taking, you're saying, out of the five twenty-five, out of the ten percent, that you need some of the money that might go into Sheridan Lake.
Correct. So right now, last year, we budgeted two and a half million dollars for Sheridan in our budget in two thousand twenty. We didn't know where it was going to come in. We didn't know what the bu bids were going to come in. Now we know what the project's going to cost and the state is talking about billing us for a third of what our share is after the STIP funds and the ten percent runs out.
Okay.
Basically, it's it's really kind of, I guess, semantics whether they they bill us for that this year or they bill it, bill us next year, or which pot of money they draw from first.
Okay. So bottom line, I'll get with you and see the breakdown of that because um seeing in my head and you knowing that yourself, um not, like I said, not against what you're doing, I just kind of want to see the numbers.
Absolutely. It's kind of confusing. It was confusing to me at first, too. So it took a minute.
I appreciate that. There was a motion by Druze, second by uh LaCroy. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries with one no, Commissioner DeSanto. You with us, Ms. Kara? Okay, let's check. Thank you, Ms. Kara. Okay, Joe, thirteen D Bogus Gym Road, please.
Okay, so Bogus Gym, as you've, as you know, you guys have received numerous complaints on that um over the weekend, I guess, and this morning even. Um I did take a drive out there on, well, yesterday morning, um found that uh the ruts that Ron Roskin had found and took pictures of. Let me pull that up here. So here is one, one of those ruts. Um and this is looking to the west, or excuse me, to the east.
Towards uh Norris Peak.
Towards Norris Peak, to to the east. So um what's going on here is the water has no way to get it off the road completely. So up around this corner, it's it's running down, down the road and it's until it gets to this low point, then it runs across the road. And I think they had like three and a half inches of rain at one, in dur, in one rainstorm up there. So to my knowledge, that's what caused this. Um we hadn't been up there, I think July sixth was the last time we got enough moisture to get up there and get bladed. Um we had a lot of other roads that needed attention here this last rainstorm. So uh unfortunately, we didn't get up there to get it bladed. Um this is the only big problem area that I seen when we, when we went up there. We drove the rest of the road. It had a little bit of washboards on it, uh but nothing as as bad as this area. Um I think the biggest complaint was dust for the most part.
Dust and speed.
Dust and speed due to the 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 Nemo Road Bridge collapse. I think a lot of the the residents from the the subdivision um know this route. It is not our our main detour route, so that the traveling public from from out of state doesn't necessarily know about it. Um so we we did get locates called in on this. Uh unfortunately, we're working with twenty foot of of right-of-way on Bogus Gym. Um so that's not a lot of right-of-way to work on the drainage. So we are, Sean, our engineer, is out trying to get a temporary easement so we can, we can do this work immediately um to get this taken care of. We can get it taken care of on the road, but to to do it right and get the drainage done, we need to, we need to get a temporary easement from the landowner to allow us to go on their property to to get that drainage taken care of. So we're working on that today. Um and then we're we're also going to haul in and put some gravel on this, about four hundred foot of gravel. Um it is shy on gravel. Uh if you look here, down right here, you can kind of see some some slate and some bigger rock coming up. It was due for gravel last year. Um we didn't get to it due to the rain. We, it seemed like we chased rainstorms all summer last year. So we didn't get a lot of our work done. Um so the 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 gravel that's going to go to this road um is going to come out of Benchmark and hauling out of Benchmark, which comes down onto three eighty-five during the rally, I think, would be a bad decision on our part, getting our trucks trying to pull out onto three eighty-five. So um that being said, the immediate solution, we're going to work on and get some gravel on it this week yet before the rally hits um and get the the ruts taken care of. The rest of the road is is in fairly good condition for the time of year, uh I feel. So um as for the dust, and I know mag chloride has has come up and several of the residents have have asked for that. Uh I guess my opinion on that is, is you don't want to put mag chloride on a road that needs gravel. Um it's not going to do any good and there's no binder left in the gravel, so it's not going to to do what it needs to do. It, you know, and and it is fairly expensive. It costs us, what, about twenty-two thousand bucks?
Yes, twenty-one, three eighty-four.
About twenty-one or twenty-two thousand dollars. Um and that being said, the, just an update on the Nemo Road Bridge, um they're planning on getting the crane out there August twelfth and fourteenth to get the bridge decks placed in there. Um the contractor thinks he can have one lane, if not both lanes, open by the end of August.
That's super.
So to get, to put twenty-two thousand dollars of mag water on there, um I guess I feel would be not a wise decision um from ours, from our standpoint, but that's completely up to you. Another option that I spoke with uh Ron Roskin yesterday, we have uh about ninety-five hundred tons of millings um that we were slated to go on on Rochford Road to extend the chip seal on that road. Um but once we get some gravel on this, I think uh with the the density of the housing, um would be a wise decision to put, make this a blotter surface rather than extending that chip seal on on Rochford. So um I'll throw that out there, too.
And sure.
Commissioner Roskin.
And John, John, I talked about that alternative and if I could respond to these folks that were concerned about the mag water and say, would you can, you know, this would be a better long-term solution. Uh I think that uh we could settle a lot of, you know, a lot of their concerns. And so I would definitely be in support of, you know, moving it from the Rochford Road over to Norris Peak or to Bogus Gym simply because of the density. And there's larger acreages there and sooner or later, they're going to be subdivided. So I think it's a good long-term solution.
I do want to point out one thing that Mark pointed out here this morning when he got it back in. Um there's portions of of Bogus Gym that are very narrow.
Mm-hmm.
Um and to get uh to put millings on there, we need to get at least a twenty-foot road top. And there's places that it's, it's probably sixteen foot or eighteen foot at best. Um I can pull up rapid map here.
There's a lot of, you done, Commissioner Roskin?
Yep.
Commissioner Druze.
Uh Joe, on that right-of-way easement that you need, is that just one property owner that you're?
Right, it is. It's it's, I'll show you here uh once we get. So we actually just need an easement from, so we're going to do, we're going to put gravel down from here to about here for the time being to get, take care of the ruts and the washboards in this, in this corner. And this gentleman or this landowner here is, is who we need a uh temporary easement from. And and Sean is going out to work on that right now. Um because as you can see, the 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 right-of-way is the road top, basically, is what we have to work with. Um so that's not a lot to work with, to get a a twenty-foot road top and then do some ditch work. So.
Where are we going to put the millings, the whole road?
The whole road. We have enough to do the two point seven miles.
I think that's a great solution.
If you have smaller sixteen, eighteen-inch roads, isn't that more of a safety factor for ice or anything else later by putting something harder that would, it seems more?
Well, yes and no. I guess with the, with the millings, they're black and they're going to draw the sunlight a lot easier. Um with gravels, you know, sometimes you get the snow, you can't take all the snow off of a gravel surface. Otherwise, you end up putting all your gravel in the ditch. So sometimes the, the snow gets built up on it and it creates a, just a layer of ice that stays there all year, depending on, depending on the year.
But isn't the width the issue, though?
What's that?
Is is the width the issue with the surface or what's the the width? What, meaning you got a sixteen, eighteen-inch road on some of those areas, um people are going to go a lot faster.
Right, and that's right, oh, Mark, where is it? Here. See, right in this area here is where it gets really narrow.
Yeah.
And this is Forest Service and this is a pretty steep bank. So before we do anything, we need to get in there and do some drainage work before we put new gravel on it. Um and we need to get, get this widened out here as well. There, it's a pretty steep bank, so we'd have to work with Forest Service on getting that done.
So how, how, okay, so we do the bridges and we're going to do all this work, we're going to get the bridges done August fifteenth, maybe, or I'm sorry, end of August. We're going to do all this work on this road. Is it worth doing all this road based on the, just just because we have a bridge there that's gone or because this road needs these millings and this work, no matter what? Because you guys are going to do something like this anyway.
Well, so it it does need work and it needed gravel last year. Um you know, it is a gravel road and and it was just a thought, you know, South Rochford, or not South Rochford, Rochford Road itself has got a lot less houses on it than Bogus Gym does. Um and I guess one thing that when I started, Mark stated that that's where they were planning to put the millings. Um and after the complaints yesterday, it kind of just maybe dawned on me that, hey, maybe this would be a better place for those millings. And and I believe Mark kind of concurred.
So bottom line, based on the density, based on what you guys are thinking, you guys are the highway guys, that this is a better fix for this road because it is a more populated road, um and you're okay with the safety of what you're going to do, um you're going to widen, you're going to fix some ruts.
Right, there's some some obstacles that we'll have to overcome to get all this to come together. But um I think first and foremost, if we get some good gravel on there, um the new gravel that we have at Benchmark has a lot more P I in it, has a lot more clay, so it's going to be a lot more dust-free. So that, I think that's going to be, you know, in September for these residents, be a an immediate fix. You know, I don't, the millings probably aren't going to happen this fall. Um you know, the, we, because if you put millings on there, you got to chip seal it. And then to chip seal, you have to have a temperature of seventy degrees and rising or sixty degrees and rising.
Correct.
So we're going to run out of construction season um before we can get that done.
And sure.
Ms. Druze.
I think, Joe, uh generally, this is not a through road for the most part.
No.
Uh where we're talking about, the Pennington County portion is where the density of the of the homes are. And so it's traffic going to their homes and coming back out. Uh right now, there are some that are using it that need to access Nemo and so forth that are using the entire road, which after Pennington County, it turns into Forest Service.
Right.
Road. For how, how long is that? Is that a?
Um, well, Deb and I, we actually drove it uh when we went out to that meeting, Deb.
Yeah.
I don't know exactly the length.
But my point is, is that once we get the bridges back in service over there, this again, probably revert back to where it's just going to be used primarily by those residents. once we get the bridges back in service over there, this again will probably revert back to where it's just going to be used primarily by those residents through there. Uh, the road does need to work. I think the solution that Joe is, is suggesting is great for that particular road.
Well, bottom line is, um, what's, what was the gravel going to cost and what is it going to cost now to take the time and energy on a road that's going to be basically a temporary road till we get a, a bridge in? What's the cost difference and what's that do to your other projects and your other stuff that you're doing?
Uh, so we don't generally like to work in the hills during the rally just due to the motorcycle traffic and whatnot. Um, the cost, we've already got the gravel crushed up at Benchmark. It would be the cost to haul it there, um, which is just manpower and, and fuel. Um, I don't, I could put a cost to that. I don't have that in front of me right now, but, um, it is, it's, it's a road that needed gravel last year. We, like I said, we just didn't get to it. So it for sure will get gravel, you know, this fall. We'll shift to that after we get the rally done. And, and we've got another large project in Longview. Um, I'm sure some of you, DeSanto, and I think Lloyd does drove that, uh, we're, we're beginning work on that here next week. It's kind of a good place to hide during the rally, but with the ruts and the washboards on the, on the S-curves there, they needed fixed immediately. They were dangerous. So that's why we're out there um, right now and getting those fixed.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinet.
So the 10 web forum complaints that I got wasn't necessarily about just what's happened since the failure of the Nemo Bridge. This has been something going on for eight to 10 years. So I, uh, I agree that the failure of the Nemo Bridge probably, uh, made this move a little faster, but I think it's been a problem. Uh, ever since they've started, uh, subdividing these larger acreages down in Bogus Gym, it's probably just going to get worse before it gets better. So I still like the idea of the, the recycled asphalt and chip seal.
So bottom line is, uh, folks, we are expanding and we are, um, making developments on roads that cannot fit the density which we are putting them at. So we need to think about that and people paying for some of this that are doing these developments. Because again, these are for residences on this road, which not against in one sense, but, um, we went from graveling to, um, Joe, I, I wasn't against the gravel. You had to do it anyway. It's now we have to widen the roads. We have to make sure the, the areas, um, on the sides where we don't have any drainage. We have to make drainage for roads for a development or six now that never paid for any of it. They say they pay taxpayer dollars with their property taxes, but they also, um, those roads and stuff aren't just traveled by those residents in one sense. And the other, we're creating densities in areas where, um, they can't take those densities based on these roads. So we need to think about that. Um, when we are approving some of this. So again, I'm not against, um, making roads improved for residences. That's what we're supposed to do. Um, but now we're widening roads and, um, figuring out drainage areas after we've created density areas and improving these developments. So somewhere along the line, we need to think of the future, which I am working with, uh, planning on a one-mile, three-mile limit of how we are affecting, uh, different areas by not improving roads and drainages and, and putting infrastructure in. So, uh, bottom line is, again, I'm not against that in one sense and the other, um, we are actually helping create these problems, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I would make a motion that we allow Highway Department to repair what needs to be repaired as far as the, washout is concerned and the, uh, washboard, gravel the road. And I also believe that we, in my motion, I would make it a 25 mile an hour temporary speed limit on that road. Um, I was up there, I spent about an hour and a half, um, I was fly fishing on the creek there. I went up to Bogus Gym and spent about an hour and a half watching traffic at about 5:30 in the afternoon. There's a lot of traffic. Um, and if we leave that and don't do anything, those, those ruts that have been, uh, those washouts are just going to cause more, um, washboarding. Because as soon as you hit that, then your wheels start going like that and you start causing more washboarding. So that would be my motion. My motion would be to.
That was a long motion, but.
Yeah, sorry.
Usually we'll let you speak and make the motion, but we, we have been lenient on those because we can't help ourselves.
I'll second that sort of discussion.
DeSanto had made the motion and Drews had made the second.
Madam Chair. Uh, with, with that motion, if we approve that, Mark, how do we handle the, uh, recycled asphalt then?
Well, I'm not including the recycled asphalt in that. We'd have to talk about that later. So that's, that's widening the road and all.
That's something that could be talked about later though, right?
It could be and, and we don't necessarily need a motion from you guys for, for any of that, that stuff that we normally, you know, we do that on a normal day-to-day basis, so.
It's just good for the.
Speed limit is the only thing we'd probably need the motion for.
The speed is definitely, yeah, correct. Speed is the only thing you need a motion for.
Didn't Sheriff say something about 35 miles an hour?
It is a 35 mile an hour road and, and you can't really do, I mean, you drove it, you can't really do over 30, 35.
Not really.
You know, so I, I don't know that, I think patrolling it would probably be the best course of action. I think you already had Mr. Or Captain Hughes out there doing that. And, and I think, you know, 25 versus 35, uh, you know, I guess, I'm not opposed to it, but I don't know, the dust, it, it's not going to solve that issue.
I'm just talking as a temporary safety measure because of the increased traffic. That's the, I mean, just during the next, till we get the bridge fixed is all, because the, the traffic is dramatically increased.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Well, I, I'll agree with the motion of, personally, I think you already have the authority to do it because it's a matter of, we're already been doing it. We just fell a little bit behind in with the other stuff we had, added extra traffic. I do agree looking into fixing the drainage and so forth because that's going to save us maintenance on the road in the future. So we have to contact those landlords. I think that's a step we have to go forward. I think that's, that's where I'm at. As far as the asphalt, you know, if that's going to help us save maintenance and time from running that far out from our shops or from other areas to save us the county money, I'm willing to look at that in the future.
Yeah, and, and, you know, every year, you know, I, I'm talking to Mark about this when he got back this morning, but every year these guys want mag chloride, right? And, and the county's policy is that they need to pay for it. So, um, this would be a good compromise, putting some, some recycled asphalt down at some point. But there's a lot of work to get, you know, that I didn't think of, Ron, when I was speaking to you yesterday, you know? It's not just as easy as put the asphalt down. There's a lot of other steps you got to do to, to get that stuff done, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Joe, for, thanks for jumping on this. If you would please, uh, sometime in the next couple of days, could you send me an email just with kind of the scope of the, what we're going to do in the near future? So that I can forward it on to these other, uh, web forum recipients?
Yep, I think Joan has already done that.
Okay.
Um, I, I sent her an email yesterday, so she's already responded. I think everybody that sent in.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, we got that done yesterday.
The only motion basically we need, Joe, is the change of 25 miles per hour, right?
Correct, and we actually need, if, I believe we need a resolution to do that. Um, so we'd have to, to get a resolution back, you know, and it'd be the 18th before that got approved. I don't know that a speed limit can be approved today.
I guess that's my point. Okay.
So I, I mean, the bridge is probably going to be open by the time.
Basically, we don't need a motion for any of it?
I guess not.
So the other thing is, is, um.
I withdraw my motion.
Second agrees.
Are we going to, you're going to bring a cost estimate forward on all the work that you need to have done on this road? Because you already had to have gravel. We understood that. But how much it's going to cost for widening roads and chip sealing and all that stuff by the time we're done? It's, it would be nice to see that cost estimate, um, going forward.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can, we can put a cost estimate for you.
Madam Chair, I'm confused about the widening of the road. We're not widening any road. All we're doing is we're going to widen or hopefully, uh, extend the easement going through one property that would create a width in the right-of-way longer, wider than 20 feet.
Ron, there, there's actually, there's portions of Bogus Gym that are, that are only 18-foot. And if we put asphalt millings and turn that into a blotter surface, pretty much a pavement surface. General rule of thumb, you know, our ordinance 14 states that it needs to be 20-foot wide. So, um, this road has been like that for many, many years, right? But if we're going to go through the effort to improve it, we need to make it the safest possible. And to do that, there's spots that the road definitely needs to be widened.
Okay.
So it's not just the drainage. The drainage is where they need to be.
Still the right thing to do if it's going to be, uh, increasing the safety of those residents up there.
Yep, but just cost estimate if we could.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can get that done.
All right. Item 14, uh, new position DBM rating Department of Equalization. John? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Commissioner. Morning Commissioners, John Morrow, Pennington County H R. Um, so today we have before you a motion to actually update the rating, if you will, on a position within the Department of Equalization. Um, it was originally rated, um, by Gallagher, uh, Benefit Services, um, as a C-41. Um, upon request from the Department Director, we actually went back and looked at the job description a little bit more closely. And we were able to actually determine that the C-41 was high. The B-24 is a more appropriate rating. So, um, on the, the memo that you have before you, it explains that we're trying to change that then from the C-41 and, and readjust and make it a B-24 on the Gallagher scale. Uh, what that does is change it then also from the starting base rate, uh, currently as a C-41 for the next year, um, from 2735 down to a 2257 hourly rate to start.
Thank you for putting those numbers down there too, John.
I even have some additional ones if you're interested.
Nope, I think they're good. Do we have a motion?
All moved.
Motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any other discussion, John?
No, that's it, ma'am. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Items from Commissioner Ben, resolution of set hours of operation for county offices. Ms. Holling.
Yes, Commissioners, uh, at the last meeting, you saw the resolution to set the hours of operation for county offices. There was a, a mistake in the Highway Department. Their summer hours are only Monday through Thursday. So we wanted to get that corrected. Um, and now is the time to do that at this public hearing.
Okay.
All moved.
Moved by DeSanto, second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Holling. Items from Chair and Commissioner members. Well, let's go with Mark DeSanto.
Mark DeSanto.
Commissioner Marks. Madam Chair, I had no, uh, committee meetings last week. Um, I've got committee meetings coming up this week. And, uh, with the COVID-19 Task Force for the County Fair Board and also the Board of Directors meeting for the County Fair Board. So I will be repeat, reporting on that at the next meeting.
Thank you. Ron Roskinet.
Well, other than numerous site visits, but that's really not a committee meeting, but, uh, it's, they're always interesting. Uh, the Building Committee, we did via Zoom and then we had some executive sessions, uh, relative to the, uh, Building Committee. We got a few things in the pipeline. We want to divest ourselves of the LaCrosse Street facility at 725 LaCrosse and, uh, and then there's a piece of property that I think would be beneficial for the county to have if we're looking out 10 to 15 years, 15 to 20 years. And so we're also exploring that idea as well. And, uh, we will continue those discussions later today when we have our next Building Committee.
Thank you, Ron.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I did forget one meeting I had last week. It was via phone call and, uh, the reception was terrible. But, uh, it was Weed and Pest Board and as usual, uh, Scott is moving forward with more grants and, uh, to offset costs for the, for the county, um, looking for more, uh, forest cutting money, um, and that sort of thing. So, uh, not a whole lot to report on that other than that, that he's looking at additional grants for, uh, picking up forest service contracts to cut wood.
Nice.
Valid.
Nice.
Thank you. Um, I did attend a couple of meetings. Um, I worked with Planning and Jennifer from Black Hills Council. We're looking into the one-mile, three-mile limit options. Uh, that will probably take us a while. Um, just seeing where we can go with helping, uh, in those areas for planning. Also, um, with Holly looking into the recreation areas that were water areas that were in the newspaper from a group that was wanting to do some different things for making it, uh, basically a state or federal waterway. Um, we're still looking in for, if I'm correct, Ms. Holling, looking into those areas to make sure, um, kind of like the scenic byways, what that intends and what that is going to intend or take in order to, uh, make those areas what they want. So understand the concept of it, but there's more than just saying we'd like to make it a recreation water area. And, uh, so looking into that as well. So just a couple different planning areas. Commissioner Drews.
Uh, Ron's already covered the Building Committee, uh, Healthcare Trust Board. Uh, last meeting we had with that shows that the, uh, cash balance is remaining, uh, stable, a little bit over 3.6 million. So, uh, that continues to run in a very positive manner. One thing that, uh, the board is looking at is a, uh, education platform, uh, which would help employees to make decisions relative to the healthcare options. Uh, it's still under, uh, consideration and discussion, uh, but you'll be hearing more about that, uh, fairly soon. And I did not, uh, I was out of town, so I did not make the, uh, Governmental Affairs Committee meeting.
Gary, Lloyd?
Um, the Black Hills Area County Commissioners and Officers meeting we held last Friday, we had a presentation from Black Hills Local Government on a lot of the CARES Act and stuff. And I appreciate Mr. Drews and Mr. Roskinet, uh, attending and, and, uh, I'd say normally, you know, during these times, we normally have about 40 in attendance from the surrounding counties, but uh, when we're doing these Zooms and, and so forth, our attendance is a little low, but, uh, that's part of the times, you know? Um, I'm sure one, once we things get back to, uh, be, feel, people feel more secure and, and so forth, we'll have bigger turnouts for those. But it was a good presentation and learning for, for those that tend by Zoom and in, in the room. Community Health Center conflicted. I had another meeting with Collective Healing, so Community Health Center, I did not, wasn't able to attend by Zoom. They're doing theirs all by Zoom. And the Collective Healing one I attended by Zoom also. Um, they're moving, Collective Healing is moving forward with recommendations. We're having the discussions with, uh, the, uh, members of the Police Department's Leadership Team on recommendations that they've come up with. And good discussions are going on right now between, going back and forth. So that's always good to have. Um, with, other thing that I did was, uh, podcast with Black Hills Podcast. He wanted to do, I wanted some information on the county and, uh, I kind of got some members of the city, uh, Youth City Council to come with me and so kind of defocused onto them more than the county. But their main question on the podcast was how, how did we get, how did you guys get through your budget so easily? How did you do it was the, the main question. And I explained that, you know, the department heads are giving their direction. Uh, and they bring them forward and it's a collaborative effort and, and so that's kind of where it stopped. Then we started on the Youth City Council, how that started and so forth. He hasn't done the ending yet or anything like that, but once it's get out, gets, gets out all forwarded to the Commission and, and the county, I think it'd probably be a good, uh, addition for people to link to link on once we, we see it. But, uh, and we're outlining some more, um, maybe doing some of the, there's a great contact for the Youth City Council because they're talking about maybe doing some podcasts with that. Now they have a connection. And he, and, uh, Brandon was really receptive to working with Youth City Council and doing some other stuff. And he, he wants to do some more of that for the community. So that's a plus. You know, I'm not much of a podcast guy, but I probably will learn about it real quick. But otherwise that was, that's all I have for it.
Thank you, Lloyd. Um, we did see a signed conditional use permit on the fairgrounds. Do you have anything on that, um, Mark or?
No, I do not right at this point in time.
So I do know they are updating their sign and they have to go to the city for a conditional use permit in order to, uh, make that LED sign, uh, more effective is, is what I'm going to say. Um, because if you look at that sign, I forget it's there. I never noticed it ever. And once in a while I do, and you see some red light or gold light on it, but it's not very effective. So I told John if he needed me to go with him, if that's okay, knowing about conditional use permits and some of the sign ordinance, going through that with the city, that I would go with him if he wanted some help on that.
Increase the visibility and...
So people know what's going on.
Yeah, that's right. Yep, and it'll be easier to program, too. They can change the programming from the office and...
Just update it.
Yeah.
If I remember right, I think they wanted a bigger one to start out with, but kind of downsized for some other reason. I don't think it was any entity, but I remember they, it was the board's decision.
Cost-effective back then.
Yeah, I think that might have been the cost.
Yes, sir. And any updates on the fair, what they're doing at the fair, or what's happening at the fair by chance?
Well, we're moving forward. They're doing the X Bronx has started advertising already, limited ticket sales. There won't be any group passes any, this year, because we need to maintain a specific number of people that can be there at a time. The carnival is coming. The carnival has given us an extensive list of what they'll be doing for safety measures to keep everybody safe and keep things clean. It's pretty unbelievable what they're able to do, frankly. And I had no, you know, I kind of thought that the carnival would be probably the biggest problem, but with the, with what they've sent us, it looks like they're not going to be the biggest problem as far as social distancing and that kind of thing is concerned and cleanliness. And they've hired additional crew to clean after every ride and that kind of stuff. So it's pretty, frankly, pretty amazing. And I think the majority of what we're looking at is that people take personal responsibility. If they feel that they should be wearing a mask, then they should wear a mask. If they feel that their health is compromised and they don't feel safe at the fair, then they should not come. But the biggest thing that we're doing probably is we're limiting the ticket sales. So that we, if we're doing the grandstand events, there's the ample opportunity to sit six feet apart from one another if they choose to do so. But again, personal responsibility.
So I went to a, kind of like a fair down in Custer. I don't know if it was just like an arts fair. And they had a carnival, and not too many people were riding the rides.
Right.
And I was going to ask if anybody went to the Rushmore Mall up here.
I didn't go to it, but I drove by it several times.
Was it full, Lloyd?
I don't think so.
I don't think people are participating in the fair. Part of the carnival is what I'm saying, so I don't know if it'd be cost-effective for them, but I just wanted to know maybe that a couple of them that were going to look at these, just to see if there was a density item and then not have it or something because of, it wouldn't be cost-effective for them anyway, but just food for them.
Well, the amount of signage that this carnival is going to put up, as far as safety is concerned, might ease people's reservations to getting on the ride a little bit, because they're really going to advertise all over the midway what they're doing to try and prevent any spread.
I just figure most of them are kids. This is my common sense of it. Most of them are kids, and they aren't the cleanest, no matter how mature life is. And I don't mean that mean. I mean that just from, you know, taking care of kids and telling them to do something, and you already know. They don't do it to be bad or anything, that's, they're just being kids, so.
Their nature.
Yep. Anything else, sir?
Excuse me, just a question about the fair. I heard that German tent...
Sir, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can come up here if you'd like. Thank you, sir.
I work at the fair every year. I heard that German tent was not going to go up this year.
That is correct.
Have you heard that?
That is correct.
How about the other bars that we generally have there, like the Coors?
The Coors Tent will still be there.
Okay, okay. So there's going to still be some.
And I'm not sure on, probably tomorrow I'll find out more about who's going to be open as far as the food service buildings are concerned, like...
Vendors, stuff like that.
Exactly. But, and then the open class is not going to happen either.
And what was your name, sir? What was your name?
Oh, Rich Sturkle.
Thanks, Rich. Appreciate it. Next, we'll have the vouchers.
They've got vouchers in the amount of five-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. Commissioner Adcock will be abstaining from one vote for the eleven-hundred-dollar voucher to the price LLC. There are motion to approve the vouchers.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Roskinek. Any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The board of mistake. Thank you. Next, we'll have, if we can, a five-minute break before the Board of Adjustment.
Sounds good.
We have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by DeSanto, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Move to come out of Board of Adjustment, or move to come out of recess.
No, go, motion to come, go into Board of Adjustment.
I'll second, Mark.
Motion by DeSanto to go in Board of Adjustment, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Give us just a sec, Jase, for Ron. I thought he was coming out.
I'll keep standing up then.
I think he's probably visiting with Joe for a sec. Brittany, just want to do a sound check with you while we're waiting for Ron.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, we sure can. Thank you.
Okay.
In Board of Adjustment, Ron. Okay, Jason, please.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, County Planner. Agenda item A is subdivision regulations variance twenty-dash-zero-two for H&amp;H Land Company Number Two LLC. Agent is Brian Hammerbeck. This request is to waive road improvements to Derby Lane and to waive submittal of percolation tests and soil profile information in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue this item until the August eighteenth, 2020 Board Commissioners meeting for the applicant's request.
Motion to continue till August eighteenth, please.
So moved.
Moved by LaCroy, second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is to close the Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Jason?
Regular agenda. Just a little note here before we get into this. We've taken away the consent agenda, so you'll see that's a different, we'll need motions for all of the second readings, as well as an RV conditional use permit and some other agenda items. So a little different than what you're used to seeing. I think it was the State's Attorney's Office that decided that if we're going to advertise these agenda items, they should have a meaningful hearing. So that's the purpose behind that today.
Thank you.
So moving right into it, Agenda Item B is the second reading of Rezone twenty-dash-zero-three. The applicant is Richard Sturkle. He's in the audience if you have any questions for him. The request is to rezone ten, roughly ten acres from Limited Agriculture District to Suburban Residential District, and the Board of Commissioners approve the first reading of this rezone on July twenty-first, 2020.
Move for approval.
Second. By LaCroy, second by DeSanto. Mr. Sturkle, can I ask you a question? Come on up. Is this Green Valley where the drainage and they have a lot of water issues out there, sir?
Part, almost all of Green Valley, across the road from Green Valley to the, I mean the south, I guess, yeah, is all flood plains and everything. So that's all harvest, where they, you know, just grow grass and stuff and harvest it and do that kind of stuff. The other side of the road isn't quite so much as what that side of the road is. There's certain pocket areas that they've drawn in there that may have flood zone and stuff like that. So you kind of have to go, if you look at the map of mine, there's part of it, there's a little part of it in there that I'm going to have to deal with separately with whoever I have to deal with to talk about that particular area and putting houses or developing in that.
Are you putting, Mr. Sturkle, are you putting water in sewer? Don't they have water and sewer hooked up now?
Yes, and we're expecting that right now to go in, probably in, Lord providing, in spring of 2021. So next year, Ron and all the guys that I've Jason, the people that I've been working with out there are still, you know, riding the grant ramp and all that and getting all that in place and everything. But I wouldn't build it if I couldn't put water, sewer, and a road in there, so.
I appreciate that, Mr. Sturkle. Thank you.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
These folks have been really, really great. You folks have been great. Everybody I've dealt with, this is the first time I've ever done anything like this, and you guys have been really great. So thank you very much for all of that.
Thank you, Mr. Sturkle. There has been a motion to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I would just point out that Brittany is on the line if there's any questions of her.
Yes, sir. So if anybody needs any questions answered besides Jason, Brittany is on the line. Thank you, Brittany. Jason?
Agenda item C, second reading of Rezone twenty-dash-zero-four and Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-dash-zero-three. The applicants are James and Marilyn Dean. They have requested to rezone ten acres from General Agriculture District to Low Density Residential District, and to change the future land use from Planned Unit Development Sensitive to Low Density Residential District. This board approved the first reading of this rezone and Comprehensive Plan Amendment on July twenty-first, 2020.
Move to approve.
Moved by Roskinek.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. Questions? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item D is the second reading of Ordinance Amendment twenty-dash-zero-three to amend Section three oh nine C six, yard building setback exceptions to replace and supersede Section three oh nine C six of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. And the Board of Commissioners also approved this on July twenty-first, 2020.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item E is the second reading of Ordinance Amendment twenty-dash-zero-four to amend Section five-eleven fees to replace and supersede Section five-eleven fees of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. And again, the Board of Commissioners approved the first reading of this ordinance amendment on July twenty-first.
Or motion? Or discussion?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Drews.
Second.
Second by Roskinek. Do you need a minute to look through the fees, guys?
The only change that could be noted there is that we added parentheses after Planned Unit Development, just because it's an overlay now. It's not an actual zoning district anymore.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item F, Planned Unit Development Review zero-six dash zero-seven for Rapid City MHP LLC, Simran Mobile Home Park, to review a Planned Unit Development to allow a mobile home park. Planning Commission recommended approval of the extension of Planned Unit Development Amendment, or Planned Unit Development zero-six dash zero-seven with twenty conditions.
Have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
So is this a renewal? Is that what we're talking about here, Jason?
Yes, it came up due review. And now it's, the determination was made that any Planned Unit Development are approved by the board and not the Planning Commission.
Okay, so my question is, do all of the conditions still exist?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Jason, didn't we have some problems with them?
We did. Yep, we worked through that with the property home room, the property manager, and came to a resolution with those.
You did? Okay. Very good. Thanks.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item G.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
One question back on that one again. So does, will this automatically come up every two years? Is that, I mean, number twenty says be reviewed in two years. Is that...
Yes, yeah, it'll come up due review in twenty years, yeah. That's, that way we can follow up on the conditions that we've implemented.
Thank you.
Some of the issues that we worked through with those folks.
Item G, Jason?
Item G, Major Planned Unit Development Amendment Review fifteen-dash-zero-two for Deerfield Park Condominiums Council of Co-owners to review an existing Planned Unit Development. Planning Commission recommended approval of the extension of Major Planned Unit Development Amendment PU fifteen-dash-zero-two with thirteen conditions.
Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Roskinek. Second by LaCroy. Any discussion? Just one, have they added anything to this area?
No.
Besides the...
No, not that I'm aware of.
This, this is a newer version?
No, I believe those are the same condominiums that have been there.
But they haven't added anything on their PUD?
No.
Okay, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item H?
Item H is Major Planned Unit Development Amendment Review PU nineteen-dash-zero-three for Prairie Valley Development. Bill Freitag is the agent. I would request these to review an existing Planned Unit Development Amendment to allow for additional lots to be developed on the subject properties. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the extension of Major Planned Unit Development Amendment nineteen-dash-zero-three with twelve conditions.
Move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. One thing, Commissioner and I will be going out there with Joe tomorrow to look at some drainage areas. Mr. Freitag had some concerns with the county engineers evaluate...
Assessment.
Assessment with the drainage. So I'll be going out there. If anybody wants to go, we'll be leaving, I think, at eight o'clock, quarter day. How about that? We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item G, please.
Item I is Layout Plan...
Sorry.
Sorry?
Sorry, I'm on the wrong. He's good, Jason, thank you.
Agenda item A, or I, is Layout Plan twenty-dash-seventeen. Applicant is Jeffrey Jamison, and he has applied for Layout Plan twenty-dash-seventeen to combine four existing lots in order to create Lot fifteen R of Oak Meadows Estates. Access, as it sits today, access is off of Oak Meadows Court for all four lots. There's no special flood hazard area, and all four are zoned Limited Agriculture District, specifically Lot fifteen, consists of three-point-five acres, contains a twenty-four-by-twenty-four single-family residence with attached garage, as well as a ten-by-thirteen shed. Lot sixteen, I have those on the screen for your review. Lot sixteen is three-point-six acres, also contains a fourteen-by-twenty-seven horsestall. Lot seventeen is three-point-five acres, contains a single-family residence. And finally, Lot eighteen is four-point-six-four acres and is vacant of any structures. Proposed Lot fifteen R, they're on the right. Access will continue to be off of Oak Meadows Court and will continue to be zoned Limited Agriculture District. Total acreage will be fifteen-point-two-four acres.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ron Roskinek, second by LaCroy. Just a question. For future water needs in Pennington County area, does the state ever regulate a certain amount that they know how much they are approving or disapproving areas?
I think it depends on how many lots are serviced by that well, and then they'll regulate it at that point.
But how much, bottom line is, is, you probably don't know this, Jason, how much water do we have in Pennington County area to serve all these outlining areas and then keep track of it enough to know that, you know, that we should keep approving developments or areas to be developed? We don't, we just...
Right. So, it's handled through the state. It's all, water rights are all regulated through the state, and whenever there's a well drilled, the state knows about it. They know how many people are using that well and how much draw is on there. As far as how much water is in the county, I would have to get back with you on that to find out exactly how much.
Kind of crazy to think about, but I was just wondering if we had enough water to service all the areas and the different spots that we decided to, or they decided to grant? Because someone was telling me before that they are granting probably more water rights than probably there is water.
Right. And I know that's an issue in one of the agenda items coming up as well.
Yeah, and I didn't know if that was fact or if that was just something that someone had thrown out. So...
Something that's also dependent on environment at the time. I mean, if we've had good rain for the past six years, we're going to have a lot more water available than we would if we had a drought for the past twelve.
And that's a true statement, because you'll see pacto draw down, go up, draw down. So, so what happens? Well, we already know what happens.
Well, the majority of the wells in the Black Hills are, they're just inefficient of some type. My well, we drilled four years ago, and I had to report it to the state and how much, how many gallons per minute. If somebody in that area has a permit before me and they start losing water, then they shut my well off. And that's one way to control it. But there are some wells that are in aquifers, and such as the Menelusa, and can't remember the other one, but...
Madison.
That's a, they're the ones I'd really be concerned with, because they supply water for Rapid City and some of the municipalities around here.
Gary's right. It's Madison, Menelusa, Madison. There's Bakken and some other ones, but, all right. Sorry, just, just a question for thought. There is a motion? Or no? Yes, there is a motion by Ron. Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Agenda item J is Preliminary Platte, PL twenty dash eighteen for H&amp;H Land Company Number Two LLC to create tract one of South Computer Edition. And again, kind of going along with the Board of Adjustment, item A, the applicant has asked that this is heard at the next Board of Commissioners, or some Board Commissioners meeting.
Okay. Move to August eighteenth, if I'm correct. Jason?
Yes, ma'am. August eighteenth.
Motion by Drews. Second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Deb, that was an excellent point. Future commissions should keep that in mind.
Okay.
Agenda item K is Planned Unit Development Amendment Review zero five dash eighteen. Applicant is Gordon Howie, and he has requested to rezone approximately two hundred and sixteen acres from Low Density Residential District to Planned Unit Development in order to create Cedar Gulch Number Two subdivision. This review is in response to a complaint filed by the Cedar Gulch Two Water and Sanitary District. Little background, earlier this year, June eighth, the applicant applied for Layout Plan twenty dash fourteen in order to create seven residential lots in the Cedar Two, Cedar Gulch Number Two subdivision. And on July twenty first of this year, the Board of Commissioners continued this layout plan to the August fourth, today's Board of Commissioners meeting, to allow the review of this Planned Unit Development.
Jason, do we have a moratorium on this? For forty lots? I thought we had a moratorium at a certain amount.
Right. That was, that was one of the reasons that it was continued, is because the ingress, ingress, ingress and egress from that area. And it's limited to a single one on Brasky Road, I believe.
So, the water issue and the, the ingress?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
So, on July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, staff received a complaint regarding connection to the water system within the Planned Unit Development. The Cedar Gulch Number Two Water and Sanitary District requested that the Planned Unit Development be reviewed and that additional conditions be added to address tap fees and limited water supply of the existing system. And that complaint letter is included in your packet. And again, just similar to what we just discussed, the create, there are over sixty address points currently addressed off Brasky Road. The creation of additional lots on Brasky, Brasky Road will require a variance or subdivision regulation, variance to allow additional lots on a dead-end road without the construction of secondary means of vehicular ingress or egress. And due to the concerns of the Cedar Gulch Number Two Water and Sanitary District and the unlikely hood of allowing additional water taps to the new lots, a variance to the subdivision regulations to allow lots to be created without written authorization from water supplier, the adequate water is available to serve the proposed subdivision will be required. Staff recommends approval of Planned Unit Development Amendment zero five dash eighteen with the following ten conditions. One of those conditions being added in there is number two, and that does sum up the requirement for the developer to contact Cedar Gulch Number Two Water and Sanitary District to ensure there is adequate water.
I would move for approval with ten conditions.
Been a motion? Is there a second?
Madam Chair, just a question for Jason.
I'll second for discussion.
Before they can actually plat this, is it my understanding, looking at these conditions, that they've got some major hurdles to address, such as vehicle access and water?
That's correct. The vehicle ingress and egress, as well as the water. Those are your issues.
I mean, those aren't too small hurdles, but...
Exactly.
They have to be, they have to be adhered to before they can start, before they can plat.
That's correct.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
So, you got that second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My question is, Jason, and I was, you know, this has been a pretty controversial development. Now, I wouldn't say controversial, but we had some great discussions on a previous item on this out in the Brasky Road. And so, I've read through this, and yet you've addressed the egress, egress, the water, it's in the conditions. My question is, and I probably know the answer, but I want to hear something. You know, part of it says that prior to any further planning with this Planned Unit Development, the second means of vehicular egress, egress, be engineered and constructed to ordinance fourteen standards. Then it goes on, are a variance to the subdivision regulation be obtained? When you're saying are, variance to the subdivision regulation be obtained, are you saying to, to ordinance fourteen standards? Or are you, they have to variance, or they could ask for no egress, egress?
So, it'd actually be a variance to both of those. So, they would have to come and approach you for a variance for the maximum number of lots on that single access, in addition to ordinance fourteen standards.
My thought, just throwing it out there, from the discussions that we've had and past, you know, future commissions come up, you know, it says you can do a variance. We're going, are? Why would we want to do it if we don't want to do it? I mean, we've made a, a big standing on egress, egress with a number of lots. Why would we, why would we have that at the end of that, that they could do a variance?
Right. So, it's a variance. It's kind of in our ordinance. It says they are allowed to apply for the variance. There's nothing that says that you have to approve it.
Okay. I was just shooting in the dark, like maybe taking it out of there, saying this is, we're not going to approve it without it. But either way, even if we didn't, they could still apply for it, right?
Sure. They can always ask.
Do we have the applicant in the audience to visit about the ingress, egress, and the water issue? And your name, sir?
Yeah, my name is Cale Magnibo. I own Long Branch Civil Engineering. I prepared the plat for this item. I was hoping to just make a point of clarification. What we're looking for is to actually plat the lots. We understand that a condition of the plating would be that a building restriction would be placed on the property. So, no building permits would be issued on any of the lots until the provisions of the staff report, which include the second ingress, the water system, the sewer improvement issues are resolved. So, the interesting, what brought us to this point is, we have a court order to transfer these parcels. So, the, the court ordered the parcels be transferred from one party to another. And the only way to do that, in this case, is to actually plat the lots. They can't be transferred by meets and bounds, because it doesn't comply with the state law. And they can't be transferred as an allocated part, because it's greater, ours less than forty acres. So, our only option would be to go in and plat the lots so they can be transferred. And my client is completely under the understanding, he's not going to be able to build houses on there until the issue of the secondary access, the water system, and the sewer, particularly on the northern tier of lots, is the dress.
Okay, I'll just, just something. The last time we dealt with this issue and this land, the person that had came up said that, well, you guys let us plat this, so we should be able to move forward. And then, we also said, he also said that his secondary access wasn't his issue, because this land was already planted, and we let him move forward. So, I watched the tape on it, probably about two weeks ago, and it said, the second access, actually, Commissioner DeSanto, you had asked the applicant and asked him about the second access, and then he said something, and you said, no, it's actually on the deed that he would put in that second, second access. Well, moving forward with this, there's no second access, and now we're going to plat again.
Yeah.
So, for me personally, if he sells the land, it goes to somebody else, and then they tell us, it wasn't us. It wasn't us, it wasn't me that told you that I was putting the second access. It's the guy that bought it. I can't help what the other guy said.
Yeah, and I think that's why the, that's why the, the staff discussion and the discussion I've had with Brittany is that there'd be the actual building restriction placed on the, on the property, so that when you did your title work, you would have a, you'd be kind of on notice that there's no building permits going to get issued on the property until these issues are resolved.
Wouldn't it be easier to resolve that issue by the guy that said he was going to put the second access, put it in, and then we approve that, we'll do a layout plan to let him sell his property?
No, I think there's a plan for getting the second access worked out. The idea being that we'd like to move forward with getting the land transferred to make, so we can be sure that he has title to the land. Otherwise, he's going to end up, you know, doing those next steps, and there's no, there's no clear title to it until it's planted.
So, let's be up straight. Is the transfer to somebody that's doing business with him in the sense that he's selling him and he has nothing to do with it afterwards, or how's that transfer related to what's?
So, Grandview Land Company, Dan Lewis owns the, or has the property right now. The court order was for that land be transferred from him to Gordon Howie. That's a provision of the original sale of that property.
So, Dan Lewis is going to sell it to Gordon Howie?
No, he's going to give it to him, because it was a provision that was originally set up.
And Gordon Howie is the one receiving the land that hasn't put the second access in, that hasn't, it doesn't have any water from the landowners that, or the water district or whatever from before? We're, we're just going to approve that?
Yeah, that's, that's what the request is, yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair. Jason, there's no state statute that says we couldn't go ahead and allow the plating of the property without water and sec, and secondary ingress and egress? I just want to make sure if we agree on this, that we're not crossing any legal parameters that we should be looking at.
Commissioner Roskinet, I, I believe the statute that you're referring to is eleven three six. Then, there's four things that makes requests to plat mandatory. So, it's just a ministerial action on your part, where if they meet all of the conditions, then you just have to approve. Well, because they haven't met those, you have the discretion to deny, right? And one of those is the water, and one of those is the...
Ingress, egress.
Ingress, egress, because that's part of our subregs. So, it's not as if you have to do that now. You know, you don't have to approve. You can deny. It's in your discretion as long as it's not arbitrary and capricious. As far as the court order, I just want to let you know that the court order doesn't require you to plat that. The court order does not bind you at all. It just says that the applicant in that, they came to an agreement whereby Mr. Howie has to get the property, and then they have to do everything that they can to make sure that it gets platted. So, it doesn't make you guys do anything. And I just want to clarify that point, so.
Thank you. So, until he gets the, the water and then the ingress, egress, we don't have to do it. So, sir? Your name, sir?
Thank you. Mike Wheeler. I'm representing Gordon Howie. I represented him in that litigation. There've been discussion of that order. So, I was asked to be here today to kind of, you know, if there are any questions about that. I think it's been stated that right now, Grandview owns the land. And during that litigation, I mean, that litigation was all about the enforcement of a, of an agreement that was with the prior owner, that was recorded, ran with the land. And so, we prevailed on that, and the judge entered an order of specific performance requiring Grandview Land LLC, Dan Lewis, to transfer the property to Gordon Constance Howie. My understanding is that right now, with the plat application in place is so that that transfer can occur, because you can't transfer it under forty acres with the meets and bounds description. The request, and I guess the, the recommendation from the staff, was that there'd be a number of conditions that have been discussed relative to ingress, egress, sewer. There's concern about water. So, we want to get the, the land transferred to Mr. Howie so that he can proceed with addressing those issues. You wouldn't be approving anything relative to building, understanding that those, those concerns are conditions, that it would be approved subject to those conditions. So, I guess it makes sense to me right now to, to proceed with granting that application so that the matter can move forward under Gordon Howie's ownership.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I totally understand where you're coming from. My concern would be once Gordon Howie gained title that via ten legal descriptions for ten plat, or ten lots, and you go down the road, six years, a new commission, a new owner other than Howie, for an example, that could get kind of messy with ten lots being planted. And then, they'd go, well, if they planted them, they must be buildable. I'm just being the devil's advocate.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that, being the devil's advocate, but at the same time, you'd be approving it subject to those conditions. That would be of record.
Well, I think for me, as a commissioner, and from past experience, I believe that the conditions should be met before we decide that. Kind of like you're doing, but we're doing the same thing. We believe that the conditions should be met, those two conditions, based on prior history, at least for me, to be approved. So, he just said that we didn't have to do it. Our lawyer said that we don't have to do it unless those conditions could be approved.
I agree wholeheartedly. I don't mean to interrupt you, but I agree. There's, the commission wasn't a party to that case. So, there's no order requiring the Pennington County Commission to do anything. We're just looking at it as a practical matter for Gordon Howie to go out and get the next steps done. Right now, he doesn't own the property.
Right. Well, we're, we're used to the practical matter as well, so you would get the two, I'm using your same words again, sir, to having those two conditions met, at least for me.
Sure.
Just from prior practical experience of what has happened in the past. So, thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Would it be possible to add an additional condition stating in the conditions that no building permits will be issued? It doesn't say that anywhere. No building permits will be issued until that second egress and ingress is complete. If we added that condition, that would protect us from any further building on that property, even though we did plat it, because it would legally be spoken in this record.
I think it's easier, Commissioner DeSanto, to say that those two conditions should be met before we do a layout plat, and that would be the condition.
Well, but I also understand Mr. Howie's concern that, that he doesn't want to spend the money to put in a egress and ingress if he doesn't actually have title to the property. I mean, that'd be kind of a stretch to, you wouldn't do it, Deb, and you wouldn't go out and build that road and meet those other conditions if you didn't have some, I guess, thought that you were going to be able to build in the future.
But Commissioner DeSanto, that road was supposed to be met with the first subdivision, and now we're on the second.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
So, if that wasn't the case, then, you know, normally we do that.
Right.
But if the condition wasn't even met on the first one, now we're going to have it transferred to the guy that was supposed to do the ingress, egress in the first place in order for this to move forward, and so that whole area could be built out. That hasn't happened because of that. So, the condition should be, since we let it happen before, and we let it move forward, that it's only smart business in anybody's case to make sure for that transfer happens, that that is done beforehand. That way, we can move forward.
Commissioners, I just want to clarify real quick. We're still on Agenda Item K for the Planned Unit Development Review.
Yeah, correct.
And we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves with the next agenda item, which is the Layout Plan.
Oh, Madam Chair. I thought I heard our State's Attorney's Office comment that that transfer could be made without the plating. Was that, was that correct?
So, from talking with Michelle beforehand, the order signed by the judge was the result of a negotiation between the parties, between the prior owner and Mr. Howie's legal representation, Mr. Wheeler. a negotiation between the parties, between the prior owner and Mr. Howey's legal representation, Mr. Wheeler. Um, so it's possible that they would be able to transfer it in a different matter instead of using the plat, um.
But there is another mechanism.
Potentially, yeah.
And then I would suggest we continue this.
And number two, not even continue. If you look, Jason, on the stipulations on your, um, Item K, PUD, those stipulations are also on there, on that second egress and the, and the, and the water and sewer.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so that's what we're, so sorry, we're talking PUD as well, but...
I think condition one was, uh, addressing the ingress egress and condition two was the water.
Okay, but those things are on there. So do we have a motion to continue?
We have a motion. There's a motion on the floor right now.
Substitute run to continue?
Yeah, to continue until, uh, we could determine if there is a second means, a mechanism that could be used to transfer this, it wouldn't be a hardship on Gordon Howey.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second you.
Motion, um, to continue, um, do we have a certain date or do, let's talk, sir? Um, can you come back with a?
Yeah, I'm not aware of another mechanism to, to transfer without replating, but I mean, understand the commission's motion is to continue to see if that is the case, so.
If, if it's possible, is there a timeframe that this has got to be done, this transfer? Is there?
I think, uh, might be better a- addressed with the...
Kale.
You know, at the planning commission, I think we had a, I had a significant debate with the State's Attorney's Office on whether this was, you could transfer this parcel or not. Um, I know that there's discussion that her contention was that you could actually could transfer this without plating. I honestly don't think that's, I don't think you can conform with the state law and make that happen, but, um, State's Attorney's Office was going to look into it and report back to you. I, I believe that's the gist of the conversation that happened at the planning commission. So I guess, uh, the question would be, how long does the State's Attorney's Office need to determine if we can transfer by judicial ruling?
Yes, they're discussing it right now, Kale, but this is a move to approve the extension of the planned unit development in an area, the first of PUD. Was there, Jason, if I'm correct, there's two different areas. There was already an area that was planted that's done. Are these two, is the first area that was planted and, and part of this PUD, that part is done and now we're going into the second one?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay, that, that's why I'm saying on the PUD, it still has to do with the PUD because again, um, the last two lots that were sold, the, um, supposedly the people did not know there was a twenty thousand dollar hookup. There's a twenty thou- there's a twenty thousand or ten thousand or something hookup on these as well, so, um...
And that's a condition we've added during this review as condition number two for the water.
So there's some other things going on besides just doing a transfer and, and extending a PUD here, guys. It's extending a PUD that's already been, um, planted before the first set or the first development. Now it's into the second phase with no second access and now no water or enough water and sewer or whatever issues in that area. So why would we approve something that doesn't have those things in it? And then we also have a moratorium, a forty unit moratorium telling everybody else they couldn't build. And now we're going to add this to it without a second access from a person that should have put the second access in.
If I may, the, the request to approve it is so that Gordon owns the property and he can proceed with getting these matters resolved. How can he negotiate access to property he doesn't own? How does he deal with sewers, the property he doesn't own? The water issue, I'm not aware of any requirement that the, the existing water system supply water to these lots. In fact, there's a separate agreement enforceable with Dan Lewis that requires him to provide water. So whether that's drilling a well on one of the lots, whether somebody can maybe haul water, I don't know. There's no requirement to my knowledge that water be brought to each of these lots from that existing system. So we're asking that the, the application be approved so that Gordon Howey owns the property and can continue with negotiating or, or securing, rather, access, dealing with the other conditions that are set off in the application for property that he would then own. Now, if there's another way to transfer the property, I'm not aware of it. If it's, uh, under forty acres, my understanding is that it can't be transferred by meats and bounds, and I haven't been, uh, informed of anything other than that, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Um, I've, I think that, that we're concerning ourself with something that isn't a concern because of the, the following, uh, what we're going to be talking about on the layout plan. Approving this extension, um, or continuation of the, of the, uh, planned unit development isn't going to lock us in or, or make it a, a, a possibility for future commissions to allow for building because the next one we're going to vote on is going to restrict that in, in condition number one.
To me, to me, Mark, I'll just tell you, they both come together because this is to move to approve the extension of a planned unit development. Again, with ten conditions and those conditions weren't met in the first place. Now we're going to approve another PUD and he says he needs to transfer it before that happens. Well, we're saying before it transfers, follow up with what you said you were going to do. If the water's coming later, show us where the water's coming from. If you're going to do the second access, the second access was supposed to be done, I don't know what year. Show us that the second access is getting done. And then you're going to go into a layout plat, which last time we had a, a deal, if I'm right, uh, Jay, that we had to give it to him because they already layout planted it. So to me, if I'm doing a development, I'm going to be prepared that, number one, I said before I was going to put in the second access. You said it yourself for a deed for a PUD. In order to have a planned unit development, you need an ingress egress out. And in order, in order to have a PUD, you need to have water and sewer. Show us that that is provided and those things are done. And we're saying the same thing, make your transfer. And you're saying, I can't do that beforehand. How did he promise to make a second access before, sir? If he could never make it and he put it on a deed.
Yeah, I'm not aware. Your Honor, I, our, what, what we have here, Gordon didn't own this property after June, uh, seventeenth of two thousand and eleven. He hasn't owned it. So we went back, had to go to court to get an, uh, an order enforcing an agreement. So, I mean, to the extent there's been any, uh, delays relative to access and, and stuff like that, that wasn't in the works. He hadn't even owned the property. He doesn't own it now.
How did he, wasn't it on a deed or something? Did he own the property before then he got?
Correct.
Okay, so he owned it before.
And then sold it?
Right?
Yep.
And he never put the second access in for the first development, which he was supposed to. He wasn't supposed to put it in for the second access. He said he directly, if I'm correct, if I was listening to Commissioner DeSanto, that on that deed, it said he was putting in the second access. So he sold the property, never put in the second access for those people out there that had a problem already with trying to get in and out with ingress egress. Now he's coming back and buying the property or whatever he's doing. And now he's going to say, well, I'll put in that second access now.
Madam Chair.
That don't make no sense.
On that deed, it didn't require that that second access be built until there were forty houses or more.
Okay, there is now.
So there is now, that's correct. There is now, but it, but the, but the cutoff was, I believe, that those forty residences. And then that, then that second egress act or ingress egress had to be constructed. So by, by not allowing him to build any further, I mean, that's kind of what we're doing is we're forcing the issue that you're not putting no, any more houses on that property until the Brit- the road and the second ingress egress is built. Um, this, uh, extension of the planned unit development isn't going to allow him to build any further homes there until such time that he gets that second ingress egress. I mean, it's pretty clear, I think. I, I'm not seeing any...
Brittany wants to speak, Mark.
Go ahead, Brittany.
Brittany, go ahead, Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. I just kind of wanted to go over a couple of things, maybe answer some questions, um, regarding the water system out there. Um, in our planned unit development requirements, you know, the planned unit development is its own zoning district, so it's basically an agreement between the developer and the commission, you know, what those, um, zoning requirements would be. Uh, the planned unit development does require, you know, a wa- an approved water system, um, within that development. Right now, it's with the Cedar Gulch Number Two, uh, Water and Sanitary District. I have spoken to Mark Mayer with the State of South Dakota D E N R. Um, he is the water adminis- drinking water administrator. Uh, there is concern out there, um, for water supply and water quality. Um, they will not allow any more taps to be put on that water system at this time. Um, so that is also a concern. Uh, they would either have to develop out their water system, uh, maybe through a grant process, dig a deeper well, a different well. Um, but right now they just don't have the capacity or, um, with the water quality issues to add on to that water system. So that is a concern, um, with our office with that. But however, those are plating requirements, um, as Cullen had spoke to, and they do have the option of doing a subdivision regulations variance, which would be a requirement anyway, um, for that to go through. And that is actually another requirement in the planned unit development. So they would either have to meet those requirements or go through the Board of Adjustment and get a variance to not have those. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you, Brittany.
Madam Chair.
Ron Ross, or Commissioner Ron Ross.
This is a letter written by Christie Grenell with the Cedar Gulch Two. I'm just going to read it. I'm, I'm the newly elected president of Cedar Gulch Two Water Sanitary District and Sanitary District. I know there was a meeting today. None of us in our district were able to be there. This is probably highly irregular and does not matter because it's not in the meeting, but I felt it should be noted anyway. Grandview Land and Amp Gordon Gulch Howey or Gordon Howey are working on getting land planted adjacent to our district, which is an awesome thing. We could use to breathe some life into our little area. However, there's currently, there is not currently a sustainable water source for this development. I just think someone should know this and hold the developer accountable to provide a well or be candid that there is not a current water system available at this time. So I don't know, just that, I got mixed emotions. I can, part of me says, let's go for it and, and other, I feel that this could come back and snap us if we do this.
So we do have a continuance. Are you thinking, um, on the motion on the continuance till the next meeting? To see if they can find solution with the water and the ingress egress, Commissioner, or?
Or my, I thought if there's another means besides plating, we look at that and if there's not, then I'd be willing to be more, uh, receptive to, uh, going along with this because like Mark said, Item K will definitely, if everything's followed to the book, everything's up the record at the Register of Deeds, Item K should prevent any building in the future. So somebody wants to plat ten lots and have their cessfa- and pay it taxes on ten lots, it's, that's good for the county. But I just want to make sure there's not one other mechanism that we're not aware of. If, if there's not, then, uh, I'm certainly willing to, uh, look the other way.
Did you make a motion for a continuance?
Yes.
I did.
You made a continuance by Gary.
But continue till when? What do you want me to, can you continue this, this item till?
Ron, were you, when were you thinking till the next meeting or see if these guys?
Well, Ron had asked the question, you know.
Two weeks continuance?
So it's to the August eighteenth?
Jay's asking for two weeks. Are you okay with that, Ron?
Yeah, I'm fine.
So two weeks would be?
August eighteenth.
August eighteenth. Jay, please.
Jay Allerman with State's Attorney's Office. Uh, I'm just coming into this, so I'm trying to listen. It looks like there's a multitude of different opinions and issues that we're just not clicking right now. So probably a couple of weeks for the parties to get together, think of alternative or to present something that's a little more coherent and exact, so uh, you can know what your choices are and we can move forward.
I appreciate that, Jay. So we do have a, uh, Item K with a motion by Ross Connect, second by Drews, August eighteenth. Okay with both the motion makers?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. We have Item L. Um, is that the same motion on Item L? Do we have a motion? Ron Ross?
Motion to continue to the next meeting, August eighteenth.
Gary, are you seconding that?
I will.
Okay, and that would be till August eighteenth continuance? Any other discussion, Commissioners? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item M, please.
One second, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Brittany, for that, uh, background.
You're welcome.
All right, Agenda Item M is conditional use permit nineteen dash thirty-three. The applicant is Robert Livingston. Uh, he has requested a conditional use permit to allow recreational vehicle park. The RV park will include twenty-two RV sites, a gas station, a convenience store and a bar to serve beer and wine. As it sits today, the property is Zoned Highway Service District consisting of nearly fifteen acres. Lot contains a convenience store, an equipment shed, a telecommunications tower, as well as fuel pumps. There is special flood hazard area on the property. Access is taken off of West Highway forty-four via South Dakota Department of Transportation approved approach. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review, uh, County Highway, South Dakota Department of Transportation, County Environmental Planner Two, County Natural Resources, County nine-one-one, as well as the U S Forest Service. All had comments that are included as conditions of approval. Uh, staff did perform a site visit and verify that the store building, garage, fuel pumps sign and pond is on the subject property. Uh, the planning commission did recommend approval at the July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty meeting. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit nineteen dash thirty-three to allow for recreational vehicle park with thirty-three conditions.
Move for approval.
Move by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Jason, I am in, please.
Item N is the first reading and public hearing of ordinance amendment twenty dash zero six to amend section five fourteen violations and penalties to amend and supersede the existing section five fourteen of the Pennington County zoning ordinance.
Any questions or motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioners, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Brittany.
Sorry, Brittany Molitor again. Um, I just wanted to skip a little background with this. Um, when Michelle and I were working through some of the other ordinance amendments, we noticed that we were continually saying the same things in every section. So what we tried to do was put them all in one section and then in each of the previous sections, we will actually just refer to section five fourteen. Um, and one change, um, that you, that is probably one of the bigger ones is under D, under the abatement. It would give the planning director some authority to do the abatements. Um, that was something that we had spoke to this board about at the last meeting, um, when we requested that abatement uh, for that property in Green Valley. But there is, um, one thing that we would like to add to that sentence, um, that there is a, maybe a cost limit, uh, like five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, um, without having to get prior board approval. So just some thoughts on that.
What does the city do? They, they already do that, don't they, Brittany? Or do they just abate and it doesn't matter how much it costs?
You know, I don't know. I'm sure that there is some spending limit. I would feel more comfortable as a planning director, um, having some limit because if something gets somewhat costly or, um, it's going to be, you know, somewhat significant, because we are put, these abatements do are, or excuse me, are put at special assessments against people's property taxes. So keep that in mind, um, with that.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews, please.
Uh, I would, I would think that if we put a thousand dollars in there, that would be good. But the other question I have for Brittany is Brittany, even if we did that, that doesn't mean that you couldn't bring something that you question, uh, back before the commission, right?
Correct. If there is something that we feel that's going to be a continuous issue where we're going to have to continually abate, uh, because we're not getting response, we would definitely bring that in front of the commission.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I'd make a motion to, uh, approve, uh, with a, and put a, a dollar maximum in there of a thousand dollars, or I guess a dollar minimum, I guess is what it would be considered.
Okay, there's been a motion by Drews to...
Second for discussion.
Okay, motion by Drews, second by DeSanto. Any other discussions?
Brittany, what, what could the maximum penalty fee for, um, starting work prior to approval be? Is that completely, um, is there a maximum fee for our pa- Is that completely, is there a maximum fee for our, for our permits?
So, you know, as, as far as building permits, those are based on square footages. Most single-family residences are about $1,000, so if they did, they started it without prior approval, would that three times or the tripled, it would be a $3,000 building permit.
Seems a little stiff to me.
That's.
We've done that before, but we, we've had these before, but we have never went to 3,000.
We've never exercised it, I know that.
We have fined people for stuff, but I guess if it was something like industrial area or something industrial, I could see a $3,000 fine because you already know safety.
We're one board, and I'm worried about maybe the next board. And, I mean, we had an example of that, and we got resolved where, I can't remember where it was, but it was a, the guy had started on a foundation. It was up in the hills somewhere. Do you remember where I'm talking about? And, and he had to stop because the road needed to be 14 feet wide, and we had to make a decision on whether or not the road was 14 feet wide. But then when they came up to inspect the road, they saw that he'd already put in some foundation work. To me, that's, you know, allowing for a fine that high because you started a foundation that could easily be torn out and the land restored.
But Mark, don't they have to have, if it's over 1,000, she has to come to us?
What's that?
If she fines them, doesn't she, if it's over 1,000, they have to come to us?
Penalty fee.
Yeah, this is the penalty fee.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
That would actually be, so these right now, the only change, those are actually in our ordinance, they were actually under Section 511 fees, so we moved them into the correct section.
Okay.
This amendment, but right now the penalty fee is doubled. And so if they do, and then it's a little different if they do variances or conditional use permits, they're doubled plus $500. So, you know, when they come in front of you and ask for that $800 back, that's double fee because it's $300 plus the 500. So that's how it's written now. And then any other permits, building permits, floodplain permits are doubled. This is just changing it to tripled.
Yeah, I was going to point that out, that it tripled. I don't want to remember seeing that.
Okay, yeah, I apologize.
That's why I'm bringing it up. And, and also, I know that, that we have been lenient, but this could even apply, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brittany, this could apply to somebody in the case where we've seen probably 20 different times since I've been a commissioner where somebody comes in and they've, and the prior owners had built something, and then we're penalizing them for buying a house because their real estate agent didn't tell them that there was no building permit on that building. And this could allow any future commission to really hammer somebody for that if they choose not to be lenient, and that, that worries me. That's, I mean, to me, really, the people that should be getting that fine is, is the real estate agent that didn't tell them that those permits were required.
So just, Brittany, could you tell us food for thought on why you trip, why you think triple instead of double? I mean, what was your thought on that and why you wanted to triple? Ms. Brittany?
Sure. And, and in speaking with our code enforcement officer and our state's attorney, we really, even with the doubled fees, it didn't deter people from doing it. So that was kind of the concern with our office, and I think Jason can speak to that too. It just, there just wasn't enough, you know, I guess, we didn't have enough teeth, I guess, or to get anybody to listen. Hopefully with the building inspection.
Exactly what I was going to say, Brittany.
Moving forward, that will help this situation because we run into this a lot where buildings are being built, they're not built in the correct location, and then, and then they're coming in to you guys to request variances and things like that because there was issues. So, you know, and, and this was a proposal, and I'm not sure if you have something different or some other avenue or way, but.
So Brittany, food for thought is that, must be my word today, you'll have a building inspector that should help the situation, and that's why we did that in the first place. If that doesn't seem to happen with the double and, and nothing seems to change, then you, then you should probably change it to something else or look at better solutions, or maybe that inspector will have better solutions, but it doesn't sound like we, you have the vote to do the triple.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Brittany, you know, relative to Mark's concern, is there a way that something could be read so that it would go back to the owner that did that? If they sell, if they subsequently sell the property, so that that owner would be liable and not the person that bought the property unsuspectingly?
You know, I'm not sure that that would be something that we could do. I think that's more of a civil issue in the owners. You guys do, is on the last line of that, you guys do have the discretion, if you feel there's mitigating factors present to waive any and all fees or any portion of that, if you wish.
So do we have a change in the motion, or what are we thinking? Commissioner LaCroy.
That was what, this is one of the concerns I had when I was reading through this. I personally, when I see the triple, just my learned experience in the last year from buying a property that's outside, outside the municipality, that's a ways away, understand how some people do that, you know, having to drive 30 miles, 50 miles into town to check on that, you know, I, and they think they're doing some, I had to pay the fees for a shed, the double fees, after I bought the property. I knew it was that way when, just because of being here, but a normal person would have never known that you had to have a building permit for that and had to pay double fees once it was found. I did it, I accepted it because I didn't want to argue with it. Triple, I might get, I, it's just certain, I don't, I don't think people are intentionally building a, a house. I can understand that part, but they do certain small structures out in ag, they put, out of convenience, I think, but I don't like that triple. I, I really don't. I think there's other issues as far as it happening that we, if we get the building inspectors, you said, that isn't the right step, I think. That's the right step. By increasing fees is, I don't think, double didn't do it, triple's not going to do it, quadruple, what you're going to do is create some hardship between us and the people and bring more people to want us to waive them after they've sold it, was my thoughts.
So Mr. Drews, listen to LaCroy and others and DeSanto, do you want to change that or amend that motion? Mr. Drews, you would amend it?
Gary was the motion maker. No, because that has, my motion really doesn't relate to the tripled, per se. Mine is to, not to exceed the $1,000.
Yeah.
Okay. So the motion that you made was the first reading and public hearing amendment on Pennington County to amend section violation of penalties to amend and supersede this section 514 violation. So you actually?
Yeah, I think if they want to, if they want to get rid of the triple, they have to make a substitute motion.
I would make a substitute motion.
So basically, the amendment was the $1,000 that Brittany wanted on the sentence.
Correct.
So let's vote on that first, and then we can amend the, are you okay with that, guys? Because that's what Gary's motion was.
Could you do a friendly amendment?
To do both?
On the same motion? If the motion maker and seconders are okay with it?
I'd, I'd be open to that.
Okay.
I'm okay with that, with the friendly amendment.
Okay, so we have amendment for the thousand to change that sentence, and then we have amendment for?
To change triple to double.
To triple to double.
Back to the original.
Gary, you agree with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
You guys are approving the ordinance but amending the penalty fee to be a maximum of $1,000?
Yes.
And to change the word from double to, from triple to double?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. That'd be a motion by Drews and second by DeSanto. Brittany, you have any thoughts or?
Um, yes, just clarification for Kara, that it, it's not actually the penalty fee that's going to be up to $1,000, that it allows the planning director to abate a property to up to $1,000.
Okay.
Paragraph D.
Okay.
Under paragraph D.
I don't have any of that paperwork.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay.
It's on the screen.
All right. Everybody on the same page? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item O.
Item O is an encroachment agreement between Pennington County and Fletcher and Julie Mayor. Fletcher and Julie Mayor, property location is 24095 Barney Road. The owner has built a two-stall residential garage within the adjacent right of way. I believe this was the way forward that the State's Attorney's Office came up with to get around having the property owner tear down that garage and relocate it.
Is this one we approved last time?
Yes, I believe it was on the agenda last time.
Remember the encroachment? Okay. Anybody have a motion to this?
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve by Ron, second by LaCroy. Sir, you okay? Us moving forward? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Madam Chair.
Sorry.
Just a question, so this was continued?
No, this was the agreement that once we agreed that, on the encroachment, remember the garage that was encroaching into that right of way, and Joe had to come up and talk about the, you know, it was encroaching into the?
Okay, okay, so this is the agreement that came out of it. Okay, I'm with you.
Yes, sir. You okay?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we will have items from the public. Not, we'll have executive session, SDCL 1-25-2-1 and contracting pending litigation, SDCL 1-25-2-1.
Moved to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Motion by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.